All right, I'd like to call this Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Mr. Odell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, our source of all wisdom and strength, you have entrusted us with the duty to serve others. Grant us the grace to do so with clarity, courage, and peace. Holy Spirit, guide our thoughts and bless all those present. We place this meeting in your hands, trusting in Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Neese. Commissioner Neese?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Odell?
Odell?
Here.
Oh, here.
Commissioner Lounds?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner, sorry, Guttler?
Here.
Vice Chair Slay?
Chair Benner?
Yes ma'am.
We have form.
All right, thank you. All right, if anybody missed the announcement earlier, anybody that's planning on addressing the board this evening from the public, if you haven't already, there are comment cards over when you entered. If you fill one of those out, just make sure you turn it into the secretary down here, please. So we have that for our records. Next, do we have any announcements from anybody on the board?
Chair, I'd like to announce that I will be abstaining from item D this evening.
Okay. He's abstaining from item D. Will not be voting on that one. Any other announcements from anybody on the board? Seeing none, do we have any disclosures on any of the items on today's, tonight's agenda since four of them are quasi-judicial? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 15th meeting?
Don't move.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, this is a public hearing, so if any member of the public wishes a general comment to the board, now would be your time to speak. If it's specific to an item on the agenda, you will have a public comment period for each specific agenda item. This is just for general public comments to the board. If you have any, come on up now. Thank you, just state your name and address for the record.
Alan Montgomery, 2376 Johnston Road. Let me kind of introduce myself. I'm retired, 45 years, state level government experience, primarily leadership, law enforcement, public safety. Graduated FBI National Academy and a host of other schools. I also served as a city administrator for a number of years, so I have some knowledge of your board policies, but I just want to clarify a couple of things to start with. This board, I assume, took an oath of office to uphold the ordinances and laws of St. Louis County, the state of Florida, and the United States. Is that correct? Yes.
County attorney?
Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. This is the Planning and Zoning is a voluntary board. I'm not, was there an oath that you guys filled out? I know that the Board of County Commissioners takes one, but they're elected. These are volunteer-appointed members.
Right, but they don't have an oath of office?
Not that I'm aware of.
There wasn't a swearing-in ceremony? We are just a recommendation board to the Court of County Commissioners. Nothing we do here is final. We just make recommendations based on applicants.
But I did understand that this is a quasi-judicial meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So you are operating under color of law?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public for general comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to public hearings, item 9A, or do you want to do B and C first?
Good evening, Chair, Benner members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Corey Benton, Planning Manager. As the Chair indicated, for agenda items B and C, the future land use map amendment and the planned non-residential development proposal under the project name of Fort Pierce Commerce Center. We did receive correspondence from the applicant's representatives this week requesting that this body entertain a continuance to take action this evening to continue the public hearing on those two petitions until this body's July 17, 2025 meeting to begin at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter. Based upon the published packet and the public notice, the appropriate procedure would be to open up a public hearing, allow anyone to speak. If they're not able to attend, should the commission take action to continue until July 17, but that is staff's recommendation in lieu of presentations and diving into those two items, B and C, that this body open up that public hearing, hear from anyone who wants to put comments on the record who might not be able to attend in July, and take action to continue until that meeting for those two items.
All right, so then let's open up item 9B first. And there won't be any presentation, right?
No. Chair? Do you have the applicant's representative approach?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Leslie Olson, Principal with District Planning Group, representing the applicant. Some documentation has come to light that we really feel merits some review before we bring this before you, so with your great, by your graceful continuance, we will see you next meeting.
Thank you.
And available for questions.
Anything from the board? All right, this is a public hearing. I will open item 9B for the Fort Pierce Commerce Center, open for a public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board, come on up. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Pharaoh?
Mr. Odell?
Motion to continue.
We have a second?
Sorry.
All right, motion by Mr. Odell, second by Mr. Guttler.
Mr. Chair, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri, is that to the date certain? Are they asking for the July 17? If it is, it would be better to have that in the motion, if we may.
Would you like to amend the motion with the date?
Yes ma'am, we'll amend the motion with the date, July 17.
All right, motion's amended to July, continuing to July 17, second by Mr. Guttler. Can we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Neese?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Lounds?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Guttler?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Odell?
Yes ma'am.
Vice Chair Slay?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Benner?
Yes ma'am.
Continuing.
All right, continuance passes. Well, next will be item C, same thing, we'll open that up. Anybody from the public wish to address the board on agenda item C?
Odell?
Hmm?
Odell?
C, this is the same one. Seeing none from the public, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Odell?
Same motion to continue on July 17.
In a second. Motion by Mr. Odell, second by Mr. Guttler. And call the roll.
Commissioner Neese?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Lounds?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Guttler?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Odell?
Yes ma'am.
Vice Chair Slay?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Benner?
Yes ma'am, motion carries. We will see you guys next month. And now, 9A.
Good evening, Chair Benner, members of the Fakersy County Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, Irene Settlemeyer, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. This is the public hearing on the Orange Avenue Growers Market's request for a conditional use permit to allow the development and operation of a farmer's market in the Agricultural One zoning district. The meeting was prop, this public hearing was properly noticed with a sign on the property, a mailed notice to all owners of property within 500 feet, and the publication of an advertisement in the newspaper. I received one call from someone who drove by the sign, and when they learned about it, they expressed support, but otherwise I've had no public comment directed to the Planning and Development Services Office. So just as a little bit of background and overview before we dive into this particular application, it was just about a year ago, like August of 2024, I guess approaching two years ago, no, August of 2024, that the Board of County Commissioners amended the Land Development Code, chapters two, three, and seven, to allow the establishment and operation of farmers' markets in the Agricultural Five, Agricultural 2.5, and Agricultural One zoning districts countywide. This wasn't limited to this property, it was all countywide. A conditional use permit is required, and definitions and certain minimum supplemental standards were adopted that compliance with, which must be demonstrated. I'll say, you know, prior to this amendment, an individual farmer or individual property owner is permitted, before this amendment was permitted to sell products from their farm on their property. The change here was, enables the sale from many different property owners to consolidate and sell from one property. So some definitions were key, and I'll just quickly go through some of the elements of the code that this will be the first time that the code's being implemented. Tonight's applicant is also, was the private property owner who brought forward the amendment to the code. So a farmer's market, it's a retail sales use that allows one or more producers that primarily, primarily defined as greater than 75% of the offered products, are, sells farm products and value-added farm products directly to consumers. Farmers' markets can include indoor and outdoor display and sales. A market, farmer's market is not a flea market, antique market, or similar marketed activity. A producer is a person or entity that raises or produces farm products on the land that the person or entity farms and owns, rents, or leases, or a person that, or entity that creates by cooking, canning, baking, preserving, roasting, et cetera, value-added farm products. A vendor is a farmer or other person designated as having the right to participate in the market. Farm products, items sold at farmers' markets from a producer. Farm products shall include but are not limited to agricultural products such as fruits, vegetables, mushrooms, herbs, nuts, eggs, honey, or other bee products, flowers, nursery stock, livestock food products, including meat, milk, cheese, and other dairy products, and seafood. Value-added farm products are products processed by a producer from a farm product, including but not limited to baked goods, jams and jellies, canned vegetables, dried fruit, syrups, salsas, salad dressing, flour, coffee, and other beverages, smoked or canned meats or fish, sausages, or prepared foods. So the intent of the supplemental standards was to, the intent of the farmer's market is to be a small area for local farmers, gardeners, and producers to sell fresh, locally grown and produced farm products and value-added farm products to the public. Sales may be from a truck, table, tent, booth, or a permanent structure that is less than 6,000 square feet. And the market shall be open for business not more than three days per week. Standards were established for parking, one space per thousand square feet of market area, ADA spaces, Americans with Disability Act spaces must be paved. The design of the parking, I'm going to go into this because this is one of the issues that, where there's some conditions of approval and the applicant is asking for something different than staff has recommended. The design of parking area is to be reviewed with the application for conditional use permit. Paving may be required for vehicular use areas. Vehicular use areas are the driveway into the market, the drive aisle between the parking spaces and the parking spaces. Other materials and methods of stabilization may be considered or required considering the scale, frequency, and duration of use. And then there's factors, two other sections of code which grant to the Public Works Department and the Planning and Development Services Department the ability to provide some flexibility in paving standards, and we're saying those, those you can look at for guidance in applications for a farmer's market. So the, the, on the screen now is the property outlined in yellow. It's about eight and a half acres. The market area is somewhere about three acres, and that's outlined in red. So this, the particular plan here, close up, is showing the, the actual sales area, two areas, I think, of 3,900 square feet each, 7,800 square feet in total. It's providing for dry detention and providing for drainage swales here on the south of the property, along the north of the property, and a small swell on the west side of the property. This plan shows the 39 parking spaces and the driveway coming in off of Orange Avenue, the dumpster area, hand washing and restrooms. The applicant is proposing to use portable restroom facilities. So this is just illustrating where landscaping is provided. There is a proposed buffer along the west side of the drive aisle, and it, this buffer is on adjoining property. It's not within this parcel, and, but the property next door is owned by the same individual who owns this property, and there, we have asked for a landscaping easement be placed for that section of landscaping. They're proposing to protect the nice stand of palm trees that are existing. Landscaping is provided around the dumpster area in the form of a hedge. Landscaping's provided around the restroom and hand washing facilities, and inconsistent with the requirement that landscaping be provided every 10 parking spaces. There's three small islands in the parking area proposed. They have relocated, it wasn't shown on the plan submitted, but I was out to the site today. There's a double row of palms, sable palms that have been located out along the property line. This is the, the driveway as it exists now serves, there's a couple residential units in the rear end of the lot, and this is what it appears, what it looks like. You can see on the west side of the road, there are some, let me see, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking, this is the east side of the road, looking out towards Orange Avenue, that in this area there's not a lot of landscaping, but we're below the market area, I think, at this point. But here is closer to where the market area, looking at the east, where a landscape buffer is required by code, where we're proposing that a landscape easement be established. They're proposing to incorporate these existing trees, that makes sense, and, and supplement with shrubs to meet the vehicular use area screening. This is, shows the double row of palms that have been planted along the, towards the front, towards the, the street right-of-way. Normal landscaping that's required along the right-of-way would also require shrubs and other, other things. So there's a long list of detailed conditions of approval in the staff report and in the, in the proposed resolution. Most, many of them, we're saying can be, as long as they're satisfied before site development permit, that would be okay. But the area where the applicant is asking for relief and doesn't agree with the conditions of approval are, one, that the driveway, drive aisle, and parking area shall be paved through the easternmost ADA parking space. The applicant has proposed that the, that it be, the driveway and the parking area be six-inch compacted base with three inches of crushed concrete, which will be rolled and compacted for the driveway and parking area. Secondly, now this will be up to the board, but as our code requires the construction of a 12-foot wide multi-use path along Orange Avenue, or obtain authorization by the Board of County Commissioners to pay a fee in lieu of construction, and third, demonstrate compliance with the landscaping code and tree preservation code regarding buffer along the roadway and along the vehicular use area. So the, the landscape code, you know, strictly would require landscaping along the entirety of this vehicular use area. All along the parking area, so. So, you know, one of the, one of the intents of this code that was, it's not expressly contained in the text of the code, is, but it was definitely, I think, part of what the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed back in '24, and what the Board of County Commissioners discussed, is, you know, the idea of, of providing some flexibility in the application of the codes in order to allow a farmer's market to get started without a massive capital investment before you know whether it's going to work. So there are express provisions in the code that allow the landscaping standards to be reduced or waived, and by the Environmental Resources Department Director, and similarly, with regard to the parking and driveway, we're able to consider alternatives to pavement that meets county standards. And again, it was intended to let people try it, encourage farmers' markets, provide a locale for local growers and producers to, to market their wares, their products, and one idea is that maybe, that some of those requirements could be phased in over time, such as, let's see, let them operate a year, if, if there aren't any problems with dust or sedimentation out on the road. But anyway, the staff recommendation is for the code to be adhered to and to provide pavement, and also to, and allow grass or gravel-type parking for, for the other part of the lot. We're asking for, for pavement, actually, I said to the east, but it could be to the west, pavement along this whole, this driveway and this parking area up to this point, and the rest could be the gravel and compacted matter like it was proposed. But that, those are issues that we, I think your input would be welcome. We're not trying to belabor the conversation, but I think the Board of County Commissioners would appreciate your input, staff would appreciate your input. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve a conditional use permit for a farmer's market at, at 10-485 Orange Avenue, subject to the conditions outlined in the draft resolution. Dennis Murphy from Cold Pepper Interpening is here representing the applicant. I'm sure he intends to address you or would like to address you, and I am available to answer any questions you may have. I think I saw Grant Chambers is here from the Public Works Department, and Brian Arbiter is here from Environmental Resources Department. So we're all available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Lounds?
Ms. Settlemeyer, can you go back to your conditions for a minute?
Yeah, I just, this is just a brief summary, yes.
I'd, I'd like, I'd like to make this statement to you. I'm a farmer, and I'm for anything that people can do to bring farm to family, farm to the table businesses. I think it's a great thing to do. I'd like to see more of them. I, I don't quite understand the purpose of a 12-foot multiple path along Orange Avenue. I, I don't know what it would bring to the farmer's market, and, and I'm, I'm a little hesitant to understanding the landscape code, being able, wanting them to landscape more than what they're doing so that it stays farmer, rural, attractive, without a lot of more added expense to fulfill a landscape code. without a lot of more added expense to fulfill a landscape code that doesn't really apply to this particular type of entity.
Well, the, the code, as adopted, the supplemental standards for farmer's markets does provide that the landscaping code, as applicable to vehicular use areas, shall apply, and a landscaping code, plan that complies with the landscaping code is required for vehicle, vehicle use areas and temporary restroom facilities, and alternative landscaping plan may be approved by the Environmental Resources Director. I think the, you know, the, it's, the idea is to protect the adjacent property owners. In this case, the, the most impacted property owner is, adjacent property is the same person, but there are some other houses a little further south on the road that potentially have some impact.
Could this board make a recommendation that we, we suggest to the Board of County Commissioners that they waive these two particular conditions?
You certainly may.
I just don't quite understand the need to have a landscape farmer's market that's, that is in a rural area, that is very pleasantly developed at this time over what it used to be, and at one time, that was a grove. I used to sell fertilizer to it. I'd, I'd like to see us do what we can to encourage more of this type of thing without burning them down with, with added expenses that really don't quite serve a purpose for what we're trying to do with it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradley.
I'd like to add to that, too. I mean, I agree 100%. Why are we, we trying to fight a small family, most likely family-owned, bringing to the locals, something the locals can contribute? But I've seen so much dry retention on there, and I'm thinking, we have eight acres, three acres may be possibly used for a few days a week, and we have, as a county, requirements of all this dry retention that we barely have on communities that are bringing 200 units. I, I, I agree with the landscape, agree with the, the path. I, I would almost like to see a little bit of a waiver of, you know, or a purpose of why we have to have all this dry retention when we have five acres of open field, so.
Well, I, you know, that, the applicant hasn't asked for any relief on that. I think it might depend on the grading, it might depend on what FDOT wants to make sure water's not, you know, flowing on. Right now, it's, it's pasture land. Once you start putting in impervious surface, there'll be more water flowing differently than it does as cattle land.
Understandable. I just feel like we could be a little more lenient, and when it comes to a project like this, it's not even taking 35, 40% of the possibilities of what they wanted.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board for staff?
Quick question, the multi-use path, there's barely any part of this property on Orange Avenue because of that, how it's triangular shaped up there, so they really, I mean, if they did it, it'd be, their driveway is probably the only portion on Orange Avenue, right?
Well, you know, I don't know whether that, that triangular, that right of way that's owned by the Turnpike Authority, whether that's considered really part of Orange Avenue, I'm not sure how that works. I hear what you're saying, yes.
Right.
I mean, the idea is, you know, you don't want, when, you know, things like this that require continuity, when developers of whatever kind come in, each one, if you let some skip, then you never get your complete continuity. But the code expressly provides that the board.
So even if there was a fee, only it's going to be whatever frontage there is, and if it's their road, I mean, you could be talking peanuts on, okay.
They will have to, like I said in the staff report, they're going to need to get driveway access approved from FDOT. They're going to have to improve that driveway, pave it for some amount of space, so it'll be improvement, I think, all around.
All right, next up, we have the applicant has a presentation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Dennis Murphy, I'm with the firm of Culpeper Interpreting here in Fort Pierce, and tonight I have the privilege of representing the Scheroff's and their family regarding the proposed conditional use of establishment of a farmer's market. Mr. Lounds, Mr. Chairman, board members, you may remember, I thought it was, I didn't think it was that long ago, but I guess it was, we were here before you bringing forward the concept of a, basically a neighborhood farmer's market type operation for a code change. And we are, of course, the first horse out of the gate, and this is where you find if there's a problem with what you proposed. I don't think there really is. I think there's just a little bit of interpretive wordsmithing that needs to take place in through here, that can get hashed out between this meeting and the county commission meeting. But in general, what we're talking about doing here is establishing a neighborhood farmer's market to provide an opportunity for people to come in and sell their homegrown or otherwise qualifying type vegetation, not vegetation, products and goods. As we outlined in the regulations set forth in the code, you're limited to food products, it's not going to be a regular commercial retail type operation, it's going to be agricultural goods and agricultural type activities out there, that, that kind of, that kind of operation. If it were ever to morph into more of a commercial use, then we would advance it to a commercial zoning designation and meet all of the commercial development criteria. We're not there, we're not going to get there, and we're not going to worry about that right now. What we're going to worry about at the moment is our petition before you. Our petition before you is to set up a small farmer's market operation. The concept plans you see in front of you, yeah, you see in front of you, are exactly that, they're concept plans. They're generally the footprint plans we're going to follow, but we're not going to build all of that at once. We are going, we, like every kid in a candy store, your eyes are real big when you walk in, but eventually, reality sets in and you have to kind of pare it down to where you're going to be. You're probably going to see about half of this being the first phase of the project, one, one pad area and appropriate parking to match it. Mr., you were asking a question about drainage, that's as much artistic license as it is anything else. We haven't, at the time we prepared these maps, we had not run the calculations to determine exactly what our dry retention requirements are going to be, and we're not going to build more than we need to. Once we get to that final stage of the game, then we can do it all accordingly and, and scale it down. And it's not going to, probably, at the end of the day, it's not going to be anywhere near what you see, but that's what the math will tell us off of that. If you've been out in that area lately, as Irene pointed out, excuse me, after the grove trees were removed from the property years ago, the palm trees sort of took over, and we have a pretty good dense growth of palms out there, existing sables, and we've relocated a number of them up to our frontage along Orange Avenue. Now, we have the, the pleasure and the curse of having frontage that actually is at an angle along Orange Avenue because of the slope for the bridge over the turnpike. That's why, when you look at the maps in your packet, you'll see property owned by St. Louis County, property owned by DOT through the Turnpike Authority. So that's kind of created our, bit of an angle issue there, so that's why we flake out that way. In answer to your question about the sidewalk and the multi-use path, it's a debatable point as to its public right of way, therefore, we could be looking at the whole thing. I can assure you that when we appear in front of the Board of County Commissioners, we will be requesting a waiver of that for what are probably pretty, pretty obvious reasons. It's way premature, it's not going to serve any purpose for, in, anytime soon, and anything that we put in there would quite likely get ripped out when the roads are being improved in the future, and we'll tackle that at that particular point. We are going to have a little bit of a challenge issue as it relates to the driveway connection, because the more we look at it, the more we play with it a little bit, what's not shown on, I think it's shown on the site plan in your packet, we align up with FFA road, our existing driveway. An existing driveway is a straight line shot. Now, existing driveway is for one house in the back, one home. We may have to do a little bit of finagling and maybe curve that a little bit and do some other apron treatment in the right of way, that's something that we're still working out. But at this particular point, I don't think that affects the fundamental authorization of our conditional use. That's a design and construction issue that anybody would have to face were they going to go make a driveway modification. We will, of course, be working with DOT through that portion, and then also to the county because of where the ownership lies all out there. And I stand to be corrected, but it's my understanding that DOT ownership essentially terminates on the main line of Orange Avenue at the, at, back over there at King's Highway, and that's county, except for the flares associated with the bridge. That's, that's a wee detail that we don't need to get into now. We've gone through the rest of the comments and the rest of the conditions found in here, and I don't have any major problem with any of them. I have some clarifying issues that I'll be working out with staff over the next couple of days, some of which we've already taken care of, we just haven't updated all the paperwork onto it yet in front of you. What I, what I would respectfully request is to keep this short, because I know there's a lot of people back there wishing I would shut up right now. So, I would respectfully request that you forward a recommendation of approval through the county commission, and that if you see anything specific in here that you, was pointed out a moment ago, that you would ask them to please grant relief from, I would appreciate that comment as well. And then between now and the county commission hearing, which will be posted on the property, we will get that all taken care of. So I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. I actually have one for you, the paving requirement, extending the paving into the handicap spots, and then also, if, if you do, if the paving to the handicap spots, you'd also want to pave to the bathroom, too, right? Because if I was there in a wheelchair, and if it's not paved to the bathrooms, wouldn't that be the same issue?
Yeah, that, there's, actually, it is an issue. And I mentioned the driveway, we're, we're talking, we have got no problem of doing pavement up at the driveway connection and an appropriate distance into the property from Orange Avenue, got no problem with that. Our typical section for the parking lot is envisioned right now, I think we said it was going to be a six or eight inch base, three inches of milling, compacted milling surface, it's going to be a compacted surface. It's not going to be grass, it's not going to be dirt, it's going to be somewhat of a, you know, all-weather surface. And that will be, like I said, compacted accordingly. We have no problem of paving over, for paving the parking space for the handicap, making sure that's concrete and all weather, required to do that. If we have to come in and I have to check my ADA standards, if I have to come back in and provide a hard surface accessible path to the restroom, that will be provided. That's, there's no questions required. What I don't want to do is, I don't want to come in, if I don't have to, I don't want to come in and pave asphalt, three inches of asphalt, the whole routine for the access and parking lot, for a use that's really only going to be used at best two days a week, and at best, eight hours a day. It seems to be, and I think it was pointed out, a little bit of overkill for this type use. There are safety provisions in the code that if it's found to be a problem, then appropriate enforcement actions can take place. But that's some of the wordsmithing that I want to do with staff between now and we get to the county commission. And I think that will come in and address the concerns. It's not our intention to go in and create a problem. Obviously, if we're successful to the point where we have our vendors coming in and we have, have a dust or a dirt or a wet condition problem, we're going to fix it, because it's going to cost us money if we don't. But at this stage of the game, to get started, I would really, really like to not be in that position to have to go out and pave it. That's a considerable expense that, for a small-scale operation, and again, as was pointed out, it, it becomes a, a, a deal breaker in the business lane, if you will.
Even if the handicap spots were moved all the way to the, was that to the west?
Well, yeah.
So it would just be the drive-in and maybe the first two or three spots?
Well, then I get into, then I get into a, a operation issue for the handicap activity, that they're away, the purpose of putting them in the center was to kind of give them the shortest distance to get to where they were trying to go. I could have loaded it, and we looked at loading it over to the far side to keep it as short as possible, you know, right, right there at the driveway connection. If we have to do that, we'll do that. But I think from a flow of the market, it works better if those spaces could be in the center part of it. But that's, again, that's a detail that I, I can work out on between now and, and the county commission. Looking at the, the concept of the use, any comments that this board may have that you think will help facilitate or make the use a better operation out there? Anything that we need to do aesthetically for the perimeter to enhance what we're doing? I will tell you that we've already shifted the plans a little bit to get us a little, right now, our driveway runs just about on our property line along the west side, keeping in mind that we own both sides of that. But we're probably going to shift the driveway over a little bit of feet, a couple of feet, and I guess some extra hedging and that kind of stuff in that area. But those are some of the, the fine tuning details that come through when you get into actual site, site construction. It is our intention to try and get this site physically prepped and ready for this upcoming fall season and winter seasons, so, you know, we are pushing forward on this as quickly as we can.
Mr. Lounds.
Mr. Murphy, I assume the market would be probably two days Saturday, Sunday, three days Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Well, our application indicated that we would, we reserve the right for a three-day market, but our initial operations are most likely going to be only Saturday and Sunday, typically 7:30, 8 o'clock to anywhere between 2, 12 to, 12 to 3. It's really just going to depend a little bit about what we have going into it. And, and if we find that we need to change those, if we put them into the order, if we're that restricted, then we'll come back and we'll talk to you all, and we'll make the appropriate amendment application.
One, one thought comes to mind, you're coming west on Orange Avenue, and you're going to go to this market, you're at the base of the overpass. Can you share with us a little bit your concerns and the owner's concerns, and maybe the staff's concerns of traffic trying to turn into this market at 7, 7:30 in the morning at setup time and then leaving? Your, your gate, I'm familiar with the property, the gate is set further off of Orange Avenue than most driveways, so you've got a stacking ability for people to come in and stack up and, and get in. But is that a possible problem?
I don't think it's going to be a problem for, for westbound traffic to, like you were talking, westbound traffic coming into our site. I don't think it's going to be that much of a problem, so long as I can make and maintain as much of a 90-degree turning movement as possible. But that gets back to what I mentioned a moment ago, is, and again, it gets dealing with DOT and, and the county, is that depending upon my actual angle of approach from my property, coming into that skewed line that comes down, I may not be at a complete 90, I may have to be something else, and that's, that's something I've still got to work with through the permitting authorities on how to make it work. Our objective is to maintain a 90-degree typical turn, like anybody else would. And I think we can probably justify that to all the appropriate authorities, but we'll be, we'll do what we have to do.
I hope they're successful enough that they have to put a traffic light up out there.
We do, too.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Murphy, real quick, phase one of this, right?
Yes.
What are we looking at? So we're talking about driveway coming in, first pad, not, you're not planning to build the second pad right now, whatever. Not planning to build the whole parking out right now, just, so you're, you're going to match parking with the pad?
Yeah, but it may not be a perfectly straight line, but it'll be within, yeah, it'll be within what it has to be.
So driveway in, parking pad, parking?
We'll have a temporary turnaround opportunity, so, for trailers.
Pack millings?
Yes.
With a seal coat on top or something?
Something like that. Millings or crushed concrete, or whatever it takes to maintain a solid surface that can, that we can come back in and touch up as we may need to from that time. But again, it's only going to be used on.
What would, what's a timeframe thought process on like the second phase? Or like, if everything worked out for you and you wanted to build the second?
A year. Let's say, let's say, let's say we, we clear everything here, we're up in operation this fall, okay, winter, and we're amazingly successful. You know, we surpassed every expectation that we had, and we would be back there next summer doing the site development work, with appropriate permits, of course, and we, so that the following season, we would have the expanded area to work with.
Cool. Thank you.
Anything else from the board? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. If anybody has any questions from the board as we go through this or the public, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody from the public that would like to address the board on this agenda item, come on up now. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and come back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lounds.
I move to accept and pass on to the county commissioners a request to approve with considerations of alleviating or eliminating the 12-foot path, the landscape code, and improved paved regulations for this particular application.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Dough. Mr. Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Secretary, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Neese?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Louts?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner O'Dell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Guttler?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Benner?
Yes, ma'am. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we got Agenda Item 90, Johnston Road Planned Unit Development.
Mr. Chairman, board members, for the record, Thad Crowe, Senior Planner, Planning Development Services. Tried to go through this presentation fairly quickly. This is another planned unit development proposed. We did carry out the required public notice, including posting of the property, including a mailer to residents, property owners, I should say, within five hundred feet, and also an advertisement in the newspaper. We did receive some letters recently from the White City Improvement Club and from Deborah John. I don't want to, wrong project. He's got put in the wrong project. I'm testing you, board members. I apologize for that. Okay, the aerial map shows that this is just north of Angle Road and the Belcher Canal in an area that now predominantly looks pretty undeveloped and ag, but is changing over time with the various approved and planned developments. You can see Interstate 95 to the southwest. There is a canal just north of the property, the L-20, I believe. And you can just see to the northwest the southern part of Meadowwood. Future land use map shows that this is in the very southern fringe of the TBC, the towns, villages and countryside future land use, a very large area in the county, south of Angle Road. It changes to a mix of residential and industrial mixed-use land use classifications. Zoning shows this area is mostly in ag zoning, what kind of a holding category because the future land use, of course, of the P, of the TBC does allow for higher densities and intensities. The PTVC on your left is the Sunset Lakes Village, or Village of Sunset Lakes, I should say, approved for some six, seven hundred units of varying types, density types. This project has not been realized to this point in time. Proposed zoning, of course, PUD from the current AR-1 and AG-1. The part of the property you see there, the PUD is actually, that's AG-1, and the part along Johnston Road is AR-1. So for context, I think you've been seeing this, some of you, projects come forward in the last year or two. Pineapple Grove is to the southeast. There's about four hundred units here. This project is now breaking ground essentially in first phase. Saranowa was recently approved over by the Turnpike in Old FFA for three hundred and nineteen units. The Morningside PUD is a developed, developing subdivision, I should say, that is in process. It's about two-thirds built out. And then the Eagle Bend PUD, you see over on the right-hand side, it's a large seventeen hundred acres or so proposed for over seventeen hundred units. So that's a big project. Total units in this quarter, I would call it the Angle Road quarter more or less, is a little bit over three thousand, talking about eight hundred and fifty acres with an average density of these projects of around three minutes per acre. That will support urban services such as water and sewer. This is a site from Johnston Road on the top, and this is looking into the site from the south from Angle Road north of the canal. It's a little hard to read, but this is a site plan. The top would be west, and to the right is north. You can see the entrance on Johnston Road is not far from the Angle Road intersection. And this main road swings around down here and then goes to the north. There are three cul-de-sacs off that trunk road there. And you can see up around the entrance area, it's a little hard to read, but there are recreation areas around this entrance area, about almost three acres of a playground, park, neighborhood, park-type facilities. Also, you see a trail here that essentially goes through these recreation areas and along the buffer, it's a buffer trail that then connects with the cul-de-sacs that you see. On the bottom here, you see stub outs essentially, common areas. We'll be recommending that one of those be preserved for a future potential connection to the east. Also, this road deadends here into Canal Number One Road. We also are recommending that as a future potential stub out to the north. So a few quick things about it. It does exceed the thirty-five percent PUD open space. It's about thirty-seven and a half percent. We've talked about the off-street trail. The street right-of-way is fifty feet with a ten-foot easement on each side for utilities. There are six-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street, which is generous. I think it provides a positive walking environment. The stormwater design generally follows the TBC flowway model, which essentially moves the stormwater through the property in kind of an attractive way. You see a pond that's connected by the flowway. And as far as buffers, the top buffer up here is a twenty-five-foot buffer adjacent to the residence to the, to the west. The other buffers along roadways make, basically, along this southeast property line are fifteen feet wide. Just to give a feel for compatibility, essentially, the adjacent lot sizes are larger. You can see there are some pretty large lots around there. The folks on Johnston Road, on the east side of the road, those lots range between around an acre and a little for four acres. They average out about two acres lot size. And it has a definite large lot, quasi semi-rural feel to it, lots of open space and green and some nice homes up there. The proposal here is for two types of lots, seventy-foot wide and eighty-foot wide, both with a hundred and thirty-foot depth. There's forty-six seventy-foot wide lots and thirty-six eighty-foot wide lots. So these are a little bit bigger lots than some of the ones you've been seeing lately. I think that this is kind of a homage to what's around it. There are some larger lots in the area in rural character. You can see the schematic of the lot here. You've got your standard setbacks, twenty-five-foot front, fifteen-foot rear, ten-foot side, hundred and thirty-foot depth. Discuss the buffers. The important buffer is to the west for the, the property owners who are adjacent. That's a twenty-five-foot wide buffer. But the interesting thing, and we'll show this graphically, is on that west side, there's up to around eighty feet in some areas between the property lines and, the western property lines and the homes. So this is a schematic of the fifteen-foot wide buffer, basically a hedge, a fence, and shade trees planted thirty-foot spaced. And this shows the schematic, it's kind of a, starting on the left-hand side over at the western property line, there's a twenty-foot drainage easement. And then moving, I guess, eastward, that's the buffer, the twenty-five-foot open space buffer, which will include a walking path. And then we have a twenty-foot wide lake maintenance agreement, and then we have the actual lake and the shorelines. But by the time you add those up, you're around eighty feet or so in, in some areas. Transportation impacts, eight hundred and forty-one daily trips, sixty-two of those in the morning peak hour and eighty-two in the PM peak hour. Johnston Road is paved. It is some standard, substandard in terms of roadway width, and we did a neighborhood meeting here from the residents that they did experience road flooding fairly, fairly often. It's relatively not busy. Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-five-hundred daily trips. Granted, those are, those are a fair number of cars for a rural road, but for capacity purposes, I guess it's considered to be having available capacity. As far as where those trips go, two-thirds of them head south to Fort Pierce via Angle Road. The others head north. The applicant's traffic impact report indicated that turn lanes were not warranted for the project. I know that we did hear some concerns at the neighborhood meeting, but with the intersection being so close to Angle Road and having some potential congestion without turn lanes. So I think that's kind of an open issue. But the bottom line from the traffic report, which is required, that the project entrance intersection is projected to operate acceptably. So the limitations of the TBC in this case are set by a series of maps in the TBC that limits the maximum density to two units per acre. That's exactly where they are. They maximize the density in this case. This project is in the urban service area, and that's where you need to get more density to make the efficiency of water and sewer lines work. The recreational amenities are pretty good. They do include the parks and the trail system. And we talked about the TIR indicating that this project would not adversely impact area roadways. However, there's no doubt that those cars will impact the daily lives of the residents and the folks in this area. So staff recommends approval with the following conditions. I'm going to run through these real quick. As far as from ERD, a tree survey will be required. There's really not many trees on the site, native trees, except on the front parcel on Johnston Road. I think there might be some trees in property lines, but a lot of those are kind of not native trees, invasives. Secondly, a vegetation removal permit will be required. Thirdly, species, listed species survey will be required also, prior to things taking place. And with the ERD conditions continuing, tree mitigation will be required if, if the trees are removed. There will be a lot of tree planting going on, obviously, from the landscape code, in the buffers, along the streets, and in the open space areas. Also, of course, all invasive must be removed from the site, invasive plants. So Planning and Development Services, we do think a nice feature was a pedestrian bridge on one of those cul-de-sacs that will link up the buffer trail and, and provide kind of a mid-crossing for the development. Number seven, we want to note on the site plan indicating that on that western buffer, if a fence is utilized, we want to see a hedge between it and the drainage easement. We also recommend additional trees in that buffer, understory trees, to create an effective visual screen with the purpose of, basically, the folks to the west will not be able to see this development. That's the end result with the closed force effect. Number eight, again, we talked about the dead-end road at Canal Number One Road to the north. We recommend that be labeled as the future connection point for the turnaround. And one of the common areas in the, on the east property boundary similarly should be designated a future vehicular connection. And I think the neighborhood meeting, the applicant was, I think, stepped up and offered to work with the residents on addressing some of the drainage issues. This condition pertains to the historic drainage flow. I think we see with a lot of these developments that coming in is areas like this are accepting drainage from neighboring developed properties, in this case, the Johnston Road neighbors. There is some requirement, and I am not a hydrologist, but there is some requirement that those, that properties like this have to accept historic drainage patterns, essentially. If they don't, that water's going to back right up and flood the Johnston Road folks. So during the final sign plus, final site plan process, they will look at the historic drainage flow and ensure that the stormwater program meets all requirements and addresses those historic flows and mitigates their impacts. Number eleven, prior to the DOCC, resolve the third-party traffic consultant. There's one outstanding comment having to do with the traffic analysis for the intersection of Angle Road and Kings Highway. I think that could be resolved pretty quickly. And twelve, require further evaluation with the final site plan with those turn lanes into and out of the development. We think that should be a place mark, it stays in there as the analysis continues. Property acquisitions, within ninety days, the applicant shall convey to the county fifty feet right-of-way along Johnston Road. And site development permit is required. Subdivision improvement agreement is required. A lot of this is just kind of nuts and bolts stuff, I understand. And also, to make sure that those road improvements occur, bonding will be required for any potential improvements, including turn lane. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll come back to the board. Do we have any questions for staff? I've got a quick one. The sidewalks in there, they have to have street lighting since we're inside urban service for the sidewalks and stuff. They'll be lit?
Chair Benner, members of the commission, Corey Benton. The St. Louis County Land Development Code does not explicitly require streetlights for private streets, whether it's inside or outside the urban service boundary. The applicant's typical street sections, as displayed in their petition, do identify the intent to provide for street lighting. When that occurs, you know, of course, from a safety standpoint, staff is typically supportive of it, but we do look for those fixtures to be brought down to a reasonable level to ensure that doesn't appear like a stadium nearby. I know there's a lot of residents in the area that probably prefer that country lifestyle and the ability to see stars out at night. So we understand that the applicant is looking to balance, should they proceed with any streetlights, to balance the safety internally to the, the community, but also not have any adverse effects or light spill over to adjacent properties. And with that, that internalization of the street with lots on the western side, we think that is reasonably accomplished. I think that the area that, that might be looked at closely during a final site plan would be on the north side of that initial entry, where the, the property in the north does have a close proximity to that, that private street.
Mr. Luntz.
Mr. Crowe, is the road that's on the south side of L-20, is that a designated county road or is it just a ditch bank that we grade and maintain?
Commissioner Louts, to the north of this project along Canal Number One Road, as you've indicated, there is a designated county right-of-way to the west of this project. It is utilized by those three parcels that you can see adjacent to the north arrow. This project, in our developmental review evaluation, is seeking for additional dedication of right-of-way. Should that roadway ever be improved and, and become open to the public on a broader scale, that could continue east. But so to answer your question, a small portion is, is county right-of-way to the west. This project would add to that link to the east. But it, this project's only proposing emergency access. In staff's recommendations, I think we're looking for the ability, should that become a public thoroughfare in the future, that this project would have a secondary access point on it beyond simply the emergency access. But short-term, there's no identification of capital improvements or any enhancements to that roadway. If you look at an aerial, the front yards and the, the homes, there are those three lots along Canal 20. That's L-20, Canal 20. Those homes are pretty close to that right-of-way according to our aerials.
Mr. Benton, if you look at that aerial that you have there, there's a lot of vacant space between that and the industrial park to the east of it. The way that development, that country out there is developing, I would assume that someday there'll be houses on that piece of property and the road at L-20 will become a county-access road. I would strongly urge the county staff assure this developer that they will have the right-of-way if in turn sometime that road needs to be widened as a county road. Let's don't get into a Deleon thing that we had up in Lakewood Park. Let's look ahead, let's plan ahead, let's be smart for the future. You've got a lot of open space in there that's going to have houses on it before we all get out of here. I won't see it, I'm going to die in the next four or five years, but it'll, it'll come.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I would, I would strongly urge that staff make that a provision for this development. I would strongly urge that staff make that a provision for this developer and the developments that come to the future for the pastures and the old, you know, the groves that are gone as it develops between there and the commerce.
Certainly, Commissioner. And I'll have here in a moment what figure that right-of-way dedication or commitment is proposed to be. I'm going to continue discussions. I'll provide it here shortly.
Well, if the developer's got to give up some land, so be it, but let's not get five years from now and figure we shot ourselves in the foot by not having it available when we want to develop that road.
Understood, Commissioner. And I believe it is accounted for in that site plan at staff's request.
Better to move the lot today than wish we had two years from now.
Commissioner, it's a 50-foot right-of-way dedication that this preliminary plan commits to.
Is that adequate for road development?
I believe when coupled with the two 60-foot canal district rights-of-way to the north, I do believe Public Works took a look at that and indicated a roadway could be accomplished.
If staff is happy, I'm happy.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just consideration, Mr. Benton.
Any other questions for staff? Does the applicant have an application, a presentation?
Again, my name is Leslie Olson, principal with District Planning Group for the Record, representing Collins Development Company for this lovely little PUD before you this evening. So thank you, Corey, very much for that. We have a short presentation. Something staff does so well is they just summarize everything. So I'm just here to tell the story, give you the high points. We're not going to go back all through everything. There we go. Location maps, you've already seen. You know where this is, and you've seen the site plan. Highlights, we are doing larger lot sizes than you're normally seeing right now. I do need to make one quick correction. In Thad's presentation, he said there were like 36 80-foot lots and 40, or, there were more 70-foot lots than 80-foot lots, but actually, that's reversed. We have more 80-foot lots than 70-foot lots. We have substantial landscape buffers. We started out with a 25-foot landscape buffer when we started, and after meeting with the neighbors and hearing their concerns, that has, that has only increased. So I'm going to go through that more, more in detail in a bit. We have preserved that drainage flow that the neighbors identified in the neighborhood meeting through a drainage easement, so it will continue working just as it does right now, where our site accepts their drainage. We have, we have done all the calculations for that, and we will make sure that that stays in there as we move forward through the final plan and the site development permit. And also, of course, South Florida. Not only the county requires you to accept that historical drainage onto your site, South Florida also does. So we've got two people watching us to make sure we do it. Each home will offer either a view onto the lakes or direct connection to it. So we'll go through those items as well. So when we met with the neighbors in February, we had 20 neighbors attend, really appreciated that engagement. They identified concerns about drainage. They're concerned about their traffic, the roadway infrastructure, any incompatibility there might be with those smaller lots than theirs, environmental and noise concerns, and impact on the rural character of the existing neighborhood. What we heard as the primary concern was the drainage, so we've updated our site plan for that. Also, that also gave them a little bit more of a buffer, and we have our traffic engineer here to talk about any of those impacts of our traffic on the road, our 82 lots. So talking a little bit about that buffer between us and the neighbors to ensure that they feel like that rural character is maintained. So we have preserved that historic drainage flow from their properties onto our property. On that upper section that you see there, on the right-hand side, you see that that's the existing single-family residential. We're putting in a 20-foot drainage easement ditch that will capture all of the flow off of their site, and then it will outfall into the canals. We have our engineer here tonight to talk to you about that, if you have any questions. After that, we're going to do another 25 feet of a shaded, with understory, landscape buffer, through which there will be a meandering six-foot wide path for the recreation of the people who live in this new neighborhood. After that, you have 20 feet down to the bottom of the lake, or that's down to the bottom of the flowway, and then another 23 feet of that flowway, which will end up being a latoral shelf, which really improves your water quality. It takes up a lot of the nutrients, and so those latoral shelves are really helpful. Then another 20-foot lake maintenance easement before you get to your first residential lot. That is your narrowest point between the, our neighbors to the west and your first neighbor on this interior subdivision. At its widest, where you actually have the lakes, it's over 300 feet between the lot and the neighbors. So we've worked really hard at designing a beautiful site that works really well for the neighborhood, where we try to integrate as much as we can into that existing neighborhood. We will also have fountains that will serve as an amenity and any kind of a noise buffer as well. You'll see here that we've really worked hard on recreation in open space. One of the things that I don't love seeing when I go into a new subdivision is a lot of unused active spaces, where it's intended to be active, but now it's just a big fenced-in area that nobody goes into, like tennis courts or those types of things. So one of the things we really wanted to do here was to make everything flexible, to be responsive to the kinds of things that this neighborhood wants to do together. So we have our, we have our playground and a big walking path around that, but we also have a big flexible community lawn that we specifically sized so that if you want to play a pickup game of soccer or badminton, and you want to grab your stuff out of your garage and bring it over there, it's adequately sized for a number of different kinds of sports that people could play together. Our shaded walking paths within the landscape buffer and excellent visual and physical access to that open space. We have, it's around a mile of interconnected walking trails, including the sidewalks. Everything is interconnected. You can walk laps around it, so it really creates that ability for it to be an active recreational amenity. So we have 82 single-family homes, which is the land use. The land use is two units per acre, and that is what we've asked for. If you, if you develop under the TVC guidelines, we could ask for density bonuses. We could be asking for smaller lots, higher density, if we, if we implemented those TVC bonuses. We didn't, though, because in this area, next to these larger lots, we want to be responsive to the area and, and the neighbor concerns. So this is, this is a straight future land use. We have more 80-foot lots than we have 70-foot lots. It's in keeping with the rural character and the allowable density, and it, the development aligns with the vision of the TVC through the flowway, et cetera. One of the things that staff has mentioned that they'd like to do is those open spaces that we've left that are adjacent to the cul-de-sacs heading to the east, we've left those open because it could be that we may want to connect to a future development in the future. What we don't want is to have to connect to a future development. We don't know what is going to be proposed or approved next to us, and we don't want to be required. So we have left it open so that we can, but we would like to not be required to connect. There are a lot of issues with requiring to connect to another subdivision that you don't have any control over. Then we also have that connection to the north. As Mr. Louns mentioned, we have dedicated an additional 50 feet to what's already there. So that's what staff asked for. They asked us for 50 feet. We gave them 50 feet. So since you already have a road there, we're giving you another 50 feet to the south of that. Now, when you look at the houses to the west of us along that canal road, you will see that they are very, very close to that road already. I think it's going to be, one of the reasons we did not propose that as our primary access is because we're concerned about the impact on those neighbors. So what happens in the future, you know, the county will have the say over that. We'll give our 50 feet, and then you guys can decide how you want to deal with that. We think this neighborhood works because it's consistent with the county's long-term planning goals. It's responsive to neighborhood impact, or neighborhood input. It is robust in its landscaping and buffered edges, natural amenities, preservation of mature trees. It has larger lots than you're typically seeing, and it offers much-needed, high-quality single-family housing. Any questions?
Yes. What about the connection points? Because like if you're on that, when I met with staff, they were talking about the meandering walkway, having a connection point to one of the cul-de-sacs. Would the applicant be okay, like bridging that latoral area at least with one of those? It's like, say you're walking halfway through there, and you got to get out of there, you'd have to walk a really long way to get out of that path once you're in it?
You know, we, we have evaluated it, and because, because the, because those end up being laterals, we're, we don't see it as much of an amenity. I can see, you know, the exit, the exit thing, like you see an iguana, and you want to get out of there fast or something. I don't know. But...
Or nature calls. Middle of the walkway, you've got half a mile drawn down to go back. You know, you never know. I could see it being an issue.
We, we will, we are willing to look at that as an option. And yet, but so, I'm not 100% opposed to it.
And would the, for busing and stuff, they would just pick up on where? Would they have, would buses come into the community, you think, and could they turn around at that entrance?
You know, I, I do not, I think that the school board, Thad, has not submitted a request for a separate school bus location at this time. So my assumption is that they plan on picking up on Johnston. But yes, they could, they could certainly circulate through our development.
Mr. Chairman, we will definitely, at the final site plan, address the school bus issue to the school district's satisfaction.
We haven't gotten any requests at this time, though.
Do we have any other questions from the board for the applicant?
So these lots are just, so this is just a planned development, just lots, and then the lots are to be sold off to whoever, and then they pick their builder, build their home however they like? Is this a custom deal, or?
I don't know. I don't know if they plan on doing the infrastructure or if they're planning on selling to a builder. That hasn't been identified to me. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Slade.
This may be a Corey question. Is this, what's the square footage allowed to be built on these?
Chair Benner, Commissioner Bradley, and we can pull up a lot typical and provide some calculations, but the standard lot is between 9,000 and just over 10,000 square feet as proposed. When you factor in the 25-foot front setback, 10-foot setbacks on either side, and the rear setback, once you have a building envelope, in theory, you could have probably close to a 50% lot coverage. So maybe ballpark of a 4,000, 5,000-square-foot, single-story home. I believe there's a two-story maximum here, unless there are somebody designs within the 35-foot height limit for a third story. So I would say...
Kind of fall in the RS2 range?
I would probably suggest these lots are a hybrid of the RS4. The RS4 is a seven-and-a-half-foot setback, so they've increased that to 10, which is closer to the RS3. The RS3, I think, has a little bit larger lot requirement than the RS4. You know, it's at two dwelling units per acre, which is what the land use allowed prior to and during the current TVC designation. So, you know, RS2 is comparable, but more compact lots for the sake of the open space, stormwater buffering, and private street.
Would it kind of fall even in the mixture of the, would it be the RE, the estate lot?
You know, Commissioner Bradley, the RE estate lot is certainly a larger lot, closer to maybe 15,000 square feet, typically carries the ability to have a guest home on it. But, but yes, so greater setbacks than the RS4, more closely aligned with the RS3, which is three units per acre, but straight zoning, you know, when you're factoring in the increased buffering and how they're handling off-site drainage, plus their own drainage, that's where we're seeing the pressure for the more compact lots to obtain the two units per acre.
Thank you. Mr. Louns.
Ms. Olson, you talk about a 25-foot buffer on the west edge. You've got a drainage easement that adds to that buffer. You don't get much visual or audible buffer on a drainage easement, which you do on densely-planted hedges and such have you. It's my firm belief that 25 feet is not enough to create much of a visual or audible buffer. I'd certainly like to see the county go towards a 40-foot buffer and plant it densely for the idea that it's going to cut down on noise and visual effects from this development and the people to the west. Staff, is that possible? It has to be part of a motion?
Chair Benner, Commissioner Louns, I would encourage the applicant's response, given a couple dynamics. One, we know that the current minimum buffering of our code is 10 feet. With a PUD, there's a consideration of compatibility, any adverse effects to adjacent properties. And so it's not only a specifically-planted 25-foot area with various layers or levels of material being planted, but as displayed on screen, you have the transition then into the planted latoral area where we have shelves planted, and then you have the tree requirement on private lots. So that those backyards would have a minimum of a 15-foot rear setback where the lots might be oriented toward the west, and then those side yards, a minimum of a 10-foot setback. And we would see a ratio of either four new trees per lot or five trees per lot, depending upon if it's the 70 versus the 80. And so cumulatively, we're seeing more than a 25-foot buffer, but they're specifically identifying 25 feet to be labeled as a landscape buffer, because that's where the concentration of vertical plantings are, as opposed to the latoral shelf that swings into the retention area.
25 feet's about the distance between me and Ms. Olson right now. And for the first five or six years, that hedge material will be dense, and the trees you plant on it's going to begin to shade it out. I'm looking ahead eight or nine years, if that buffer area is going to become less in 25 feet. I personally would like to see a 35 or 40-foot buffer between divisions like this on any development, whether it's this one or any other in the future. If we're going to, if we're going to rely on a hedge for visual and audible effects, it's got to be dense, and you get dense by thickness. You get thickness by a wide, wide area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anything else for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I could just request that if we have comments from the audience, if I could come back and respond to them.
Sure. All right, so this is a public hearing. If we have any member of the public that wished to address the board on this item, now would be your time. Come on up. Make sure you state your name and address for the record, and please make sure all comments are directed at the board, no community... No communication with people in the audience. Thank you.
Good, good evening. My name's Michael Farina. I currently reside at 825 Flamevine Lane in Vero Beach, but I was born here in Fort Pierce. And my property directly, is directly adjacent to this. If somebody, on the site map, the property to the east on the south edge, that's sort of divided into three sections, was my grandfather's farm, Charlie Farina. We've owned that since 1952. I appreciate Commissioner Lounds's comment about the L-20 canal and future access. Back several, many years ago, the county eminent domained five acres off of our property to build the Belcher Canal, effectively landlocking us. We used to drive over the ditch on a little, on a little bridge. Now, it's a major bridge. I appreciate, as I said, the, the thoughtfulness that the L-20 canal is now the only access I have to my property, and I have to go through other people's property to get to my property. There, and I also appreciate the fact that in this development, there is potential access at the end of the cul-de-sac to get to my, to get to our property, as there is no other access to that property, other than potentially, there is some easement currently undeveloped. I would like you to consider requiring access to adjacent property, because there is no other access to that property for future development. We're not currently decide, planning on developing, but I'd like you guys to consider that. The county took my access from my property years ago, and now I have to rely on other good neighbors to open their gates to let me even access my property now. So, that's basically my comment.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Farina? Hold up just a minute.
Yes?
On this map, where, is your piece, the large square piece to the south right there?
That's the one right there. Yes, sir.
And you only have access coming off of L-20?
I have to come off L-20, and then I come down that little access road right next to the, the park there, and then I go through Mr. Santiago's property. He opens a gate for me there, and I have to go through there to, and through another gate onto my property. Yes, sir.
You can't come down the drainage district to the south?
No, sir. There's, there's, no, there's no access to that. That's South Florida Water, and there's no access to that.
Okay.
No, sir.
Drainage District doesn't?
Eddie Carter has, had the cattle lease on all three of those properties adjoining. Now, he's passed away, and his daughter and son-in-law have that, and they've graciously allowed me to get access through their gates and unlock their gates to get to it.
But the flood control won't allow you to come down their ditch bank?
Well, I, I can't get to, well, I, I have no acc, I have, I can't. There's no physical...
They got a gate off, so you can't get to it anyway, don't you?
No, sir. There's no, there's no road right now that is, that is accessible via a regular old vehicle. So, no.
And I miss your father.
Did you know Charlie?
I sold him fertilizer when he was farming.
That was my grandfather.
I'm an old mother.
Yes, sir.
I'm an old fella.
He was a good, he was, he was a good man and loved by many.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public who wish to, wish to address the board? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Darrell Crumb. I live at 2280 Johnston Road. A lot of things been said tonight. Knowing that you all are volunteers, my hat's off to you, because I'm sure people talk bad about you after all these meetings.
No.
Some of you I know, Mr. Odell, Mr. Lounds, my wife's family has farmed most of Johnston Road for many years. The Scots and the Hamiltons have had lots of property there. This property in question used to belong to Randy Sexton. I'm sure you sold Randy fertilizer. Like Mr. Fierro said, he can't access that property. That's South Florida Water Management. They have gates there. He can't get to it. I grew up out here when Angle Road was a dirt road. There was no Meadowwood. Meadowwood was the first country club to come to St. Lucy County. At that time, Angle Road, coming from in-town, used to hug all of C-25 Canal, right before King's Highway. That's why you make the little swerve. They built a new road all the way down on the south side. They took part of my wife's family's groves, which is now the pineapple development that's approved. 30-foot wide lots, thank you. I appreciate that. That, that was rocket science, true. I called the environmental department on that development presently right now. I've gotten letters from Kathy Townsend. It appears that they are filling in Mrs. Rock's pond that I fished as a boy, and because the way they're filling it in, now they're pushing all the water out to I-95. So, I hope, I hope the environmental people, I heard you're here, I hope you do something about that. I'm going to run out of time, but I'm going to get to this. The 50-foot easement, they're volunteering. They want it to go to the west. That's, the Wyatts are at a wedding this weekend. Could not be here. I'm speaking on behalf of them. Four generations of that family have lived there. You are going to take that property from them to tie into their 50-foot easement they're willing to give you. School bus stop, that was number one on my list here. Johnston Road is going to be four-lane. I'm pretty sure Mr. Benton can concur that it's going to be four-lane. How are they going to neck it down there? I used to own the corner piece, and I'm running out of time. Give me a couple, just give me a couple more seconds. I'm, I'm really irritated about this. There won't be iguanas. It's going to be coyotes, bobcats, and hogs, all right? We don't have iguanas, yet. Yet. Mr. Dick Harold had a vision where all the houses are, and his vision was country-style living with large lots. That's, that's what this, this community should be. This was a farming community. You wanted farming. You liked the first thing. Listen, citrus is gone, but we, we got to do something to stop this. And my last thing is, I added up, we're looking at 1,400 homes between pineapple, sunland, or whatever you called it, and Mr. Popple's old hayfield. You know, I can name all of them. And so, that's 2,800 cars that's going to be at the intersection of Angling, King's Highway, or these people, if they want to go north from the pineapple or there, I, I don't know how we're going to handle it. We can't handle the traffic now at Angling, King's Highway. It's a disaster. I can't pull out of my driveway. I'm over my time. There's going to be more people complaining. I, I just don't see how this is fit next to the canal, next to Belcher Canal Bridge, and you're going to have, is this gated? I, I mean, it's, it's going to be a disaster. That entrance is not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm new to this. I've never done this before in my life, so I'm, so I'm new to this. But that home that you show on here happens to be mine. My name is Rose Montgomery.
Name and address for the secretary.
I live at 2376 Johnston Road. I'm a proud homeowner. I love my neighbors. I love my neighborhood, and that's why we bought the home in the country, because it was landlocked behind us. It was agricultural, and life was going to be good. Anyway, and it didn't turn out so well. I have a copy here for you, if you'd like to see, according to their map. I highlighted some areas that need to be brought to your attention, because I'm sure you don't know about the secrets that, that are, that are here, and they probably weren't disclosed. And that is, this whole area where they're talking about having an entrance into school buses, or people, or home, or whatever they're going to have an entrance into on Johnston and Angle, there were thousands and thousands of gallons of waste, toxic material dumped on this, this site here, okay? Commissioner Townsend is aware. She called them slot jobs. They were doing it on weekends and bringing them in by the truckload. So, she's aware of this problem that we had here. I don't know how you're going to have a recreational area with children here. The other thing, there is a concert venue to the, the property behind this, and they also have porta-potties that line the street, the trees on either side of it, and that's been an ongoing problem with nuisances, as my, I can't talk to this people. As you, it's a nuisance. It's a huge nuisance. It's a concert venue, and we have tried for the last 10 years to have that quietened down. The complaints been made on the dump sites, then on the, the property itself, on this little bitty, these tiny little houses on this little bitty plot of land is just unbelievable to all of us. We urge you, please, do not do this to your residents. We hope that you are the people that support us. We had a meeting, a neighborhood meeting, but we had no questions answered. They sent us an email with two things that we addressed. That's incorrect. The traffic study, I forgot your name, because I had already, I introduced myself to you before. That's incorrect. Those are not the numbers. We do not have the infrastructure in place to do these kind of things, and to have this much traffic and these people. 200 dump trucks going from the mill that is at Angle, at the west side of Angle, there, there's a mine, excuse me, not a mill, but a mine. They are using that for the Oslo interchange. I had to go through the Department of Transit, Sheriff's Department, Department of Transportation, FDG, the state, till I finally got someone here in the county that would told me, they sent me a flyer of who the project manager was. And real quickly, I had to contact them, because they had over 200 loaded dump trucks coming from the mine, going to the Oslo exchange, and guess what? They're not, they weren't supposed to come from there. They were supposed to come from Oslo. So, St. Lucy County, our area, our little area that we live in, our little peace quiet, and then we talk about, and thank you, you know, the buffer. I'm 500 feet off the road, for goodness sakes, okay? 15 feet, 25 feet, that is going to do nothing for my peace and quiet, but to listen to all these people make all this noise, walking trails, bicycles, God knows what's going to be going on. And then, is there going to be mosquito control for the, for the, for these ponds? We have a lot of mosquitoes. I know I can't talk to my people, neighbors behind me, but I promise y'all, they're huge and they're big, and we have them treated. And like they said, the wildlife, the list goes on. It's dangerous for children in this area. It's toxic and dangerous.
We got to wrap it up. Thank you.
The exhibit.
Oh, your exhibit that you showed, they need a copy of it to the secretary, please. Anybody else in the public on this? Come on up. Name and address for the record. And let's try and keep to the time, because we do have another item coming up, and I think there's a lot of public here for that one, too. So, we're going to try and stick to the timer.
Give me one second to get...
You got it.
My information gathered up here, and we will go forward. As you, I introduced myself earlier. I'm Alice Montgomery, 2376 Johnston Road. Have a long history as an investigator. County attorney may remember, I submitted a very detailed for you for the, on this project, with everybody, everybody involved. And that was the basis of my investigation, and I found out a lot. Does anybody here file a Form 8B?
File a what, sir?
A Form 8B, declaring a conflict of interest or a potential conflict of interest.
We filed Form 1, sir.
You have?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gattler? Good. Because you've already been paid, right?
I'm not here to answer your question.
Well, I mean, I, it's on the, the flat map. Your name is the PE.
That's fine. Let's just keep it public comments. We're not questioning.
Well, I have a right to ask about the background and if there's a conflict of interest.
Assistant County Attorney Katherine Barbieri, he's abstained. He's not talking. We have this abstention memo right here.
I'm sorry?
He's abstained from voting. He's not participating on this.
Good, good. All right. Mr. Nice, you're the owner of Nice Construction and Roofing, I believe, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you potentially have, you could potentially have a conflict of interest as a builder and a contractor. Mr. Bradley, you are a Realtor, correct?
I have a Realtor. So, his license is correct.
So, you could potentially sell a home there. Mr. Benner, you are a Realtor?
Realtor and mortgage broker, yes.
And mortgage broker. So, you potentially have a conflict of interest. Mr. Gattler's done the right thing. He's declared his. Mr. Slay, I believe, you're a Moon Swanners guy, right?
I make pork sandwiches for a living. Yes, sir. No conflict of interest.
What about Impact Unlimited? What is that business? What's good services is that?
So, that's just a management company?
What is it managed?
Within side of Moon Swanners.
Okay. And Slay Enterprises?
Is just, I bought a piece of property with my son.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Are you, County Attorney, are you familiar with Title 18 USC, Section 241, 242?
I would have to look it up to be able to speak on elegant. Yes, sir, your time will, is, is proceeding.
I'll give you the, I'll give you the Cliff Notes. Any person acting under color of law that deprives someone of civil right and/or in conspiracy is guilty of a felony, okay?
Yes, sir.
And so, the right to due process is a civil right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You understand that?
Thank you.
Sure you didn't call on me? You got a problem with me?
No, sir. You're a farmer, you retired.
Damn right.
Good for you.
And I'm proud of it. Sit down.
All right. Anybody else in the public that'd like to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lounds.
Board, I get stuck a little bit on buffers and drainage and such have you, but I really feel that the, the county needs to look at making a wider regulation for our buffers. If we're going to use them to visually stop and audibly stop sound and such have you between developments, I would encourage us to look at, at least a 35 or 40-foot buffer in the future. I have a, a problem with the traffic that's going to be placed on Johnston Road at that bridge. Traffic coming south on Johnston Road is going to be slowing down to make the stop, but traffic making the turn and going north on Johnston is going to be accelerating at this location. Have we thought about any acceleration lanes, board, or lanes to alleviate possibly that problem?
Chair Benner, members of the commission, Commissioner Lounds, in Thad's staff report and presentation, there were some notes related to the applicant's traffic impact report. Given the volumes of this project and the, the current volumes on the adjacent roadway, the applicant's findings were that ingress turn lanes were not warranted. However, staff denoted the prospects of increased volume on Johnston Road. For instance, today, we, we see under 3,000 daily trips between Angle Road and, and Indrio Road, but given that the horizon and approved developments that we've talked about this evening, we're, we're anticipating that volume to increase. So, that was a, a point that staff pointed out for this body to consider, whether that, that might be warranted. Just procedurally, we're at the preliminary planned unit development evaluation stage now. We don't vest any concurrency or commitment of, of, you know, accepting those trips on the roadway at this stage. That would come at the time of a final site plan, when they're, they're closer to development. And so, if, there are other projects that received final approvals previously... And so if there are other projects that received final approvals previously and that have commitments to have trips on the road, if we get to a certain volume commitment of anticipated cars on Johnson Road, that could activate those turn lanes from a sheer engineering standpoint. But qualitatively and looking ten, fifteen, twenty years in the future, I know this body and of course staff have always inquired and explored whether turn lanes are an appropriate design element.
Johnson Road is increasing. When you get further north of this, it is developing hands down from the old roads that were up there. Johnson Road is gonna continue to be used as a bypass off of King's Highway to get from South Fort Pierce, West Fort Pierce, coming up FFA Road to Angle Road to Johnson Road and on up to Bureau Beach. Progress ain't always pretty. But it needs to be planned ahead. We're gonna have to have some turning lanes. Now's the time to make the recommendation for it and not wait five years from now and say, God, I wish we had. That's my only concern, Mr. Ritten. Mr. Crowe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The entrance to this is so close to the bridge. Would their, the only turn lanes would be southbound, right? Because northbound, would you have enough? I guess you could do a right.
Could you not have an acceleration lane going north?
Chair Bender, historically, the predominant attention is on, for this project would be a southbound left turn lane where somebody needs to wait for northbound traffic to be able to cross the lane and turn in. Northbound, I do believe there's the ability to have a modest-sized de-acceleration and right turn lane into the entry. Seemingly, there would need to be coordination with the water control district if some of the apron and onset of that turn lane extends just south of the project boundary. But it's likely that both directions, it could be achieved in the future.
And that'll be addressed at final site plan based on traffic studies.
Yes. And, you know, this body always has the ability to present that as part of your recommendation.
And then, based on some of the comments that came up, since this is TVC, there is no gate, correct?
That is correct. Chair Bender, the petition before you does not propose gated access. Prior to the issue coming up in discussion, Thad and I briefly noted that, you know, we would follow up with the school district to pinpoint whether there's the intention for school buses to come into that entry and loop around. Based upon this design, just visually, I would anticipate a little bit of additional radius and asphalt on the north side of that drive aisle to allow the turn movement and U-turn there. But that's the, typically, the preferred approach from the school district is to not navigate through the private streets and making any loops at cul-de-sacs, but to be able to pull off the major arterial roadway or minor arterial roadway and collect children and then loop back, but do that in an efficient manner. So that certainly would be examined closer.
And then somebody mentioned about expanding Johnson to four lanes. Is that?
So Chair Bender, that's certainly an interesting, long-range planning exercise for a couple of reasons. You know, today, the volumes on Johnson Road, it's a level of service B. We know as development and increased traffic will impact that. The towns, villages, and countryside land, you know, the comprehensive plan element, it always earmarked Johnson Road in this area to be a two-lane roadway. And part of that is the extension of Emerson South. There was the goal of a crossing of Johnson Emerson with an intersection where Emerson would be more of a focal point. But that document is fifteen to twenty years old. The most recent update to the county's right-of-way protection plan or map in April of 2024 actually flips that script and puts greater emphasis on Johnson Road, earmarking it for a future one-hundred-and-sixty-foot right-of-way. And generally speaking, one-hundred-and-sixty feet's what we would plan to have for a four-lane roadway, maybe a divided median, potentially with landscaping. So that's a potential in the future. And the county engineering staff is taking necessary steps to be able to ensure that could be accommodated. Of course, when we have homesteads with these established homes, right-of-way acquisitions and things become challenging. But for new developments such as this, the county's taking steps to ensure that that one-hundred-and-sixty-foot right-of-way is achievable and this project's committing the forty feet of that on the east side of Johnson Road.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dell.
Staff, there were some serious environmental concerns mentioned earlier for this project. How have they been addressed?
Commissioner Dell, the county requires environmental assessments and impact reports at different stages of the development review process. I don't believe that the county has been presented, at least through this development review process, any documentation that identifies what was dumped and where it was dumped. We can certainly relay to our team and they can explore it with the DEP a little bit further. If that's something that this body would like us to examine in concert with any preparation for the Board of County Commissioners' action on it, we certainly can. But I know there was a mention of that during the neighborhood meeting back in February, but I don't think we have anything necessarily that identifies that there are contaminants that have been dumped on site. I recall some code enforcement consideration in this area, including noise from that adjacent source reference to the east and folks potentially utilizing this property without any zoning compliance or county authorization. But I'm not aware of any dumped contaminants on site that are a concern at the moment. But we'll be happy to explore that.
Yes, please.
Ms. Lounds.
Mr. Bender, can you pull the overhead up on this again, please?
Mr. Lounds.
Do you see that little brown spot up there on the top of this piece?
Yes.
Do you know what that is?
No.
Sand pond, isn't it?
It would pay you to go out there and find out what that is.
Okay.
Mr. Sexton had a barn out there.
All right.
And it would pay you to take a shovel with you and do some digging. Words for wise, young lady.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, while we have that.
I know what I'm talking about.
There's also another little spot up to the upper right and the lower left, as you can see in that same quadrant.
All right. Ms. Neese.
So on that same note, on the aerial view, the little brown patch, on other historic maps, I'm looking at one right now. That looks like a flag pond. Has anybody, any research to what that was? It actually has trails leading in and out. You can see them from the.
Was a flag pond.
Yeah.
It's a, yeah, it's a sand pond now.
Right.
Yeah, so it's protected.
Has that been evaluated at all?
I'm sorry. I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm following the question. Can you restate it?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that, what that, has anybody looked at what this wetland area is here? Where that brown patch is? Historically, it just shows it looks like a body of water with trails going in it. I'm just curious.
In our evaluation, it was not identified as a wetland.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
Sure. And it's all right to address Mr. Lounds' questions about additional buffering. I think it's a good idea. I like it. And so we, I chatted for a moment with our engineer and our landscape architect and our client. And they are, and I believe we can utilize both the drainage easement, the twenty-foot drainage easement, as well as that twenty-five-foot buffer to create a forty-five-foot buffer, all of which is more heavily landscaped. So we're gonna work on that when we bring it to commission.
Plan it thick, Ms. Olson.
Will do.
Thank you.
Chair. Mr. Brad. You ready for me?
Yep. Go for it.
You're gonna hear me up here preach about low density, low density, low density. And for us citizens, I live on five acres. I live in a very unique neighborhood that's maybe a hundred homes and they just absolutely quadrupled it. So we sit on this board as volunteers and we have to find the happy medium. Now, I can tell you that this is about one of, y'all can chime in at any point in time, one of about twenty or thirty that have come across this board. They, nobody's giving this type of low density. I'm not saying it's right. I'm not saying it's wrong. What I'm saying is, you have to pick the evil. And there's gonna be other developers, if it's not this person that's gonna come in here and I'm gonna tell you, they're gonna, I believe, try to put, what was that, Indrio Road on thirty-six acres? Hundred and fifty units? They're gonna try to put a hundred and fifty-plus units, if not more. So we have this bittersweet of how do we pick which way is better for all of us? I'd love one-acre lots. Think it would be the greatest thing out there. I live on five acre. I hope my kids have five acres and acre one day. But I will tell you, this is a lot more pleasing than what, something you might see here later on this afternoon, this evening, and what we've seen come across our desk a lot more. I give you a lot of credit. I know you've probably really seen and watched different meetings here and I give you credit coming in here, giving us something that most of us preach, about two units per acre. It meets it. I, you're in a more suburban setting. You remind me a lot of Lone Pine, just on a little smaller scale. And I understand the citizens. I understand that they're two acres and I understand their concerns. I have to drive by three hundred townhomes going vertical right now to my five acres. So I understand. I would love to have this compared to the three hundred townhomes on a two-lane little road that's way inferior compared to Johnson's. Much of y'all want to believe that. I do highly suggest, and I did notice that most of your houses were north and south that were on the western border. It keeps the back porches mostly vocal north and south and not west.
That was intentional, yes.
I do agree with Mr. Lounds, try to keep the buffering as much as you can. Traffic's traffic. I don't know what the right or wrong reason, or right or wrong answer is between any of us sitting up here. I don't know if any of us knows it. The bridge is concerning. I do hope the county, if this goes through or not, I hope the county starts considering areas like this. But again, eighty units is a lot better than a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy Yeah, it's pretty much what I have to say at this point, so.
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
It's all chance, right? So as far as like the layout of the deal, I think it's great. I think you laid it out right. For me, you know, and the conversations that we've been having is, for the western part of Fort Pierce, used to be Port St. Lucie, but it's all city now. But let's just talk about what county is left. Like for me, if it's Ag One, I wanna see Ag One built. I wanna see, you know, there would be no problem going here right now and just doing one-acre lots. And it's done because if you look at the zoning to the north next to Meadowwood, it's all one-acre lots, right? If you look at the three along L-20, they're one-acre lots. So I understand, but I think for me and my consistency moving forward is like when it's a western part of Fort Pierce or just the ag land itself, I just wanna see if it's gonna be developed, I just wanna see it developed for what it is. So I understand developers have a job and they wanna build out and get them, you know, and you could have asked for more and all of that. That's why I said you did a great job laying out the plan. But for me, moving forward in the western part of Fort Pierce, I'm gonna be very like, it is what it is. If it's zoned Ag One, build Ag One. If it's AR One, build AR One. If it's Ag 2.5, build Ag 2.5. But I'm not increasing density in the agricultural part of western Fort Pierce. And that's just my stance, so.
Has your client considered a little less density?
So it's interesting because the TVC makes it a little different. Since you have a TVC overlay, our future land use is TVC. And your density reverts to what the future land use was before TVC was adopted. And the land use on this particular parcel is two units per acre. And so even, even, even building agricultural is not, is not straightforward in the TVC.
Oh, I understand.
And so in order for us to develop, we have to propose this P D, right? And so I feel like we're really not asking for much here. We are, we are, we are trying to be responsive very much to the direction, the policy direction of the county, the policy direction for larger lots, and to be responsive to the neighborhood while being, while understanding that when you have certain development rights with your density. And so what we have tried to do is take those development rights of two units per acre and design it in such a way that it integrates as well as we can into an area in transition.
I'm with you. So, hey Cory, break down the overlay of, because the big portion of this is Ag One, right? My house is Ag One. When you overlay with TVC, is automatic, I mean, Ag One is one unit per acre, right? You overlay with TVC, that allows two?
Chair there.
I just wanna make sure we get this correct.
Vice Chair Slay, under the TVC overlay, the developer would have the ability to pursue development under the AR One and the Ag One with those prescribed lot sizes. There are certain design approaches that the TVC still activates. And when you have collective stormwater and street designs, what you would generally see is a wider road right-of-way, either sixty or seventy feet to meet the straight zoning county standard. But, you know, the TVC allows for the exercise under the existing zoning. With certain standards, you can pursue the PUD as presented this evening at the cap of the two dwelling units per acre. They could partner with adjacent landowners and pursue a hamlet, which is the newest form. Actually, let me put an asterisk there. Because it's inside the urban service boundary, I'm not sure that the hamlet option actually is eligible. But they could propose to partner with adjacent property owners to pursue a planned town or a planned village. And in doing so, that option prescribes a minimum density of your net developable area of about five units per acre. It's looking for more compact, walkable neighborhoods transitioning into open space and countryside and more or less some of the outskirts. The PTV to the west that Thad mentioned of the villages of Sunset Lakes, which has been expired for several years, that was a planned town-village that looked to increase density through various channels. And that was essentially the development form that they presented many years ago and had approved at one point. Mentioned it's expired. So to recap, they could pursue development of one-acre lots at plus or minus forty-one acres. We would probably see thirty-five plus or minus lots, given the streets and stormwater or if they had stormwater on individual lots for those homes. They're pursuing the allowable two dwelling units per acre, which the TVC allows. And because it's inside the urban service boundary, when we talk about urban growth, two units per acre is that threshold. So the comprehensive plan in theory is saying, in the urban service boundary, try to look at two units per acre. And why that's also important is, when you talk about extending and serving homes with central water and wastewater as opposed to being able to pursue septic systems on one-acre lots, this development would be held to that standard of central water and wastewater as opposed to when you see Ag One lots, oftentimes, folks are pursuing onsite wells or septic systems and tying into central water.
So in this, it's a max up to two?
Under the current TDV, which is the transfer of development value, the land use before the TVC was adopted in this area was residential suburban. They could have pursued nearly this precise PUD before the TVC. They're eligible to pursue this under the TVC. But they also have the ability under the TVC to partner with adjacent landowners to propose increase in density.
Gotcha. Good.
How much more land would they have to pursue?
Believe it's a minimum of a hundred and ten acres and they're at about forty-one.
So you're talking about the, approximately the two PR parcels to the east?
More than two parcels, but that chunk of acreage, yeah.
So it's very plausible, is what you're saying?
It's a possibility. You know, in looking at that former. Uh, you know, in looking at that former PTV for, uh, Village of Sunset Lakes, in theory, you could, you could see something comparable to that proposed here on the east. Whether it would be approved or not, there, there's a lot of dynamics there, but access, of course, would be a notable consideration for a project of that scale. It could be pursued.
And Mr. Farina would have to ask for big money.
Yeah.
You ain't got, you ain't got a way in, you ask for big money, brother. I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other discussion, or do we have a motion?
I mean, I, I'd really sit here and I feel we try to create low densities in suburban, don't get me wrong, I'd love this, I'd love this community farther to the east a little bit, and not necessarily here, but mentally I draw all that I ninety-five, we, I think, you know, we've talked about this before. It's, it's a really on that cut, and, and, you know, no matter which way you go, you're not going to have happy people, and that's, that's just where we live. I always am worried about what could it be?
Yep.
And, and I'm, and at the end of the day, we're not seeing anything that's less density, so.
Just real quick, is there like a ninety-five exchange coming off here somewhere?
The Vice Chair Slay, uh, at a recent Board of County Commissioners meeting, uh, they took, uh, a review of a consultant's valuation for what we coined via the Airport Connector Road. Uh, that concept's been on the books probably as long as I've been alive. Uh, that would, uh, provide an interchange between I ninety-five and the Florida's Turnpike uh, to the west here, uh, and then there would be an extension from that I ninety-five interchange, uh, essentially north of this site, uh, meandering to the northeast to tie into St. Lucie Boulevard. Uh, that, uh, that report to the Board of County Commissioners considered a half dozen or so alignments, uh, some that would hug, uh, the north side of that Villages of Sunset Lakes, that would punch through some of the wooded areas, uh, some, you know, that, that would swing south, some that would swing north. Uh, most of them avoided this particular site and ended up, uh, along L-20 or north. Uh, but long range, that, that's been a concept. Even the Meadowwood Plan identified at the southwest corner, they, they committed some right-of-way dedication for a future I ninety-five interchange. Uh, the Florida Power and Light Solar Generation Facility, uh, west of I ninety-five, allocated uh, right-of-way commitment. So, some of that is, uh, need, you know, there has to be the need for it, for public dollars to be, uh, considered and allocated for it. Uh, the TPO partnered and helped to spear that most recent study of, of alignments, partnership with the county. Um, I believe Mr. Rhodes, if that name rings a bell, he had owned or controlled some land in the area, and maybe a couple decades ago was evaluating, uh, the, the prospects of privately funding and facilitating that, or at least a group, uh, partnering with, uh, local government to do so. So, it's, it's been on the books, um, I, it's in our Towns, Villages and Countryside Future Street Network, it's in our Right-of-Way Protection Map to be able to facilitate that. So, if, uh, we see expansion, or as we see expansion at the airport, uh, we'd have an entrance, um, St. Lucie Boulevard and Inger Road.
Right. So, that would, that would tie into basically Amokli and then come down, or?
More or less, uh, you know, Amokli, uh, west of King's Highway, which is that, that western extension of St. Lucie Boulevard. Um, it needs to navigate, uh, the Amokli, uh, estate, which is a, on the National Register of Historic Places, there on the south side of the roadway. Uh, we want to avoid impacts to any historic resources like that, but yes, there are various alignments. If, if this body would like, I, I can pull some of those up, uh, but, um, or otherwise, I, I can share the email.
Well, I just, I just think, you know, we're sitting here talking about eighty-two acres, but there's a chance you guys get ninety-five exit coming right through the middle of your jump too. So, I mean, that's, this is, there's a lot going on around you. I don't know if you guys had heard about that or not, but, um, I know there's been rumblings about that for a while.
Oh, they talked about it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you ha, you have to think at some point as, as, because I know there's a big emphasis on developing the airport and all this and that, so that's, that's something that's very viable at some point, that it, I mean, it could happen. And then when that happens, brother, it's game on at that point. I mean, that's, that's the unfortunate side of what we're looking at here, so.
But today, we can do it like.
Today, you, today the iguanas are safe.
Cory, what's the ETA on the, uh, the King's Highway Angle Road, uh, whatever you want to call it, extension, widening, development?
So, Commissioner Bradley, I believe you're referring to a roughly a sixty-one million dollar project that's bifurcated in three phases, and FDOT's, uh, you know, slated to improve and widen King's Highway, continue what they've already done south of the I ninety-five overpass, from I ninety-five, uh, overpass to, uh, St. Lucie Boulevard. The, the different segments, and then the project is supposed to, uh, begin in the fall of twenty twenty-six, and I believe they're projecting completion by twenty thirty. Uh, and so, they're, they're looking at those three segments, which is largely, um, the different segments, no, no particular order that I'm communicating here, but I ninety-five up to the intersection at Angle, that intersection, uh, to Commerce Center Drive, uh, or Commercial Circle, uh, rather, um, is one phase, including reconstruction of the bridge, uh, expansion of that intersection, turn lanes, you name it, and then from Commercial Circle north to St. Lucie Boulevard.
What about anything west on Angle?
Uh, west on Angle, there would be, uh, improvements, let's, let's say, two football fields to the west to allow for transition from the existing two-lane roadway, uh, to the approach at the intersection, which would have a through lane, a northbound left turn lane on the King's Highway northbound, a right turn lane onto, uh, King's Highway southbound, and I think one of those movements actually has two turn lanes. Um, so we, we can pull up, uh, that snapshot, uh, it's a preliminary, uh, exhibit that DOT has published.
It's, I'm just, I'm curious how far west, or if there's, if there's talks of, you know, Angle to the west and ninety-five being, um, I mean, I know about the King's Highway Angle Road area, but how far west, and is there plans, if there is plans, is it a three-year, five-year Angle Road widening?
Uh, currently, you know, I believe there's, um, some efforts for resurfacing of certain segments, but not a widening, not the addition of shoulders. Um, some of the, the development proposals along Angle Road would continue a multi-use path that will start at the intersection of King's and eventually, uh, work its way west, uh, toward the Turnpike.
Okay.
Uh, Chair Benner, members of the commission, just for, for a quick glimpse, and this is available on public record online, uh, this is a compilation of the, uh, half dozen or so different alignments that, uh, Kimley Horn studied, uh, in looking at impacts to the environment, impacts to private property, cost, you know, are they crossing canals? How wide are those canals in those area? Any impacts to historic resources? What the design speed might be? Uh, what type of, uh, traffic can you accommodate with, with jogs and swings, uh, with turn radius movements like that? Uh, so that's, you know, again, part of the overall progression and consideration of how that, that roadway corridor could be achieved in the future if warranted and needed.
And that's just like a complete buyout of everybody in the area?
Well, again, each, each alignment has different impacts to, uh, private property and different levels of, of what would need to be acquired to achieve it. Um, again, some minimize private property acquisition, but they might drive up cost of design or limit, um, how, you know, quick cars or trucks could move, um, around bends there, as you can see. Um, but, but yes, it, in fact, it, it considers those, those, uh, big questions.
Mr. Lounds looks like a hotspot. Mr. Lounds?
Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, board accept this application and pass it on to the Board of County Commissioners with the conditions set down by staff, with the additional conditions that they put in, a forty-foot buffer planted high and wide and dense on their western boundary, that the developer can conform to whatever the school board designs and needs for school bus traffic in and out of this development. And if developer go and investigate the environmental issues brought forth at this meeting from the previous owners that had agricultural facilities there.
It's a motion, do we have a second? Or, different motion?
Can I add to that?
Sure.
I, I-
That's up to him, not me.
Can I add it?
Yes, for, discuss it, yeah?
I think you brought it up, I, I'd love to see a little relief, maybe acceleration lane or a turn lane, some type of relief now for the future traffic. I don't know how you would, uh, write that into a, uh, a motion, but I would like to see some type of traffic.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the consi, the conditions that the staff and the developer work out, a, uh, acceleration in, in turn lanes, like Johnson Road, and the entrance to this project.
All right.
Is that covered?
Does that work?
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion approved by Mr. Lounds with conditions, and a second by Mr. Bradley?
Commissioner Neese?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lounds?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Odell?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Gattler?
Same.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Slay?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Benner?
No, ma'am.
Sorry.
Motion carries four to three?
That would be a three to three.
Three to three.
With, uh, Commissioner Gattler's.
Three, three.
I'm staying.
Three, three.
Three, three.
Do you have to vote again?
Let's vote again.
Need a new motion.
Give me a comment?
Call it again?
Do you want to vote again on the motion?
Pardon?
Motion against, so we can vote again?
I'd move to make my same motion. Uh, Ms. Fowler, you, you've got the motion that I made?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
I'll second again.
All right, call the roll.
Commissioner Neese?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Lounds?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Odell?
No, ma'am.
Vice Chair Slay?
No, ma'am.
Chair Benner?
Yes, ma'am. Motion carries?
No. Somebody else, it's a three, three. Somebody else.
Because Larry Neese flipped, and then you flipped.
You split. That's tied again.
Third time's a charm, brother. Roll it around.
I need another, another motion.
Motion again?
Same motion.
I pass a motion that we make these paid positions.
Yeah. I am tired today. Motion by Mr. Lounds, we have a second.
I guess I'll second again?
Second again, let's, by Mr. Bradley, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Neese?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Lounds?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Odell?
No, ma'am.
Vice Chair Slay?
No, ma'am.
Chair Benner?
No, ma'am. I counted that time.
Yes.
All right. So, again, we are just a recommendation board, nothing, we just are rec, making a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, make sure you show up there, thanks for coming out, um, thank you for the applicant, it was a very good application. Um, and, that's it.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, that motion then dies, and so, if it's a motion for-
You've got to have another motion.
To denial, I need a motion voting to deny the application.
Come on back.
I apologize, but all that does is-
Yep. So, that motion fails to be another motion to deny, or another motion to approve?
All right, I'll pass a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Slay, second by Mr. Odell. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Neese?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lounds?
No, to deny.
Commissioner Bradley?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Odell?
Yes, to deny.
Vice Chair Slay?
Yes, to deny.
Chair Benner?
Yes, to deny.
Okay.
That motion carries.
Yes, sir.
On next.
All right, so that concludes item nine D. So, now we move to item nine E, Tidewater Two.
Just Chair Board Members for the record, Thad, Chris, and your planner, um, re-presentation for Tidewater Two PUD. Again, public notice was followed, posting, mailer, and advertisement. We did receive letters recently. This one? This one? Okay. I'll try to talk a little louder, Mr. Chair. We did receive several letters from public as of recent, um, not to speak for them, but uh, some features of these letters included the opposition of clearcutting, uh, taking trees out, and, uh, the exacerbating the current bad flooding, the, uh, development impacts to the north fork of St. Lucie River, um, the strained infrastructure in terms of, uh, schools, roads, and fire EMS, um, the opposition to cookie cutter development, the, uh, area roads that are in poor repair, especially Sager, um, and the fact that while the drainage is being studied, we're a long ways away from drainage solutions actually being enacted. So, uh, we did include those letters with your packet. This is an aerial map that shows, uh, the property located between US Highway One on the east and Oleander on the west, and south of Bolwitz Road. You'll see the lower right-hand, uh, area that is the existing Tidewater One that, uh, is developed. The future land use map shows the predominance of commercial land use, uh, along US One, uh, which transitions to the residential urban future land use map category, which allows up to five units per acre. Um, this property represents kind of a transitional area between the more intensive commercial land use and, and the suburban densities of the RU. Zoning map shows something similar with commercial zoning along US One and, uh, RS Two zoning on this property and the properties around it. Those are half-acre lots essentially, two unit per acre. Um, and moving further west, you have that AR One ag zoning, uh, on the west side of Oleander, so you see the transition away from US One to less intensive, intense, uh, zoning categories. So, context map just showing some of the properties around there. You can see there are a lot of undeveloped properties still, and you can also see that on Long US One, there is a wide variety of, of, uh, fairly commercial intensive uses, intensive commercial uses, uh, lots, lots of auto dealers, uh, some auto repair. Um, this is a fairly intensive commercial quarter, and then, uh, you can see, uh, the number of undeveloped lots in the vicinity as well. To the north is the city of Fort Pierce, uh, that kind of green striped area, um, and Tidewater Two is shown in the blue. So, the site plan quickly, the western part of the site proposed for a ninety, single-family, detached, uh, fifty-foot-wide lots, ponds, amenities with pool and a cabana, landscape buffers, a five-point-one acre conservation area along Oleander essentially, and then trails, a trail system. The east portion, of course, is the extension of Tidewater One to the north, ninety-four townhomes. Uh, these would consist of sixty lots of twenty by eighty feet, townhome lots, and thirty-four lots of twenty-four by eighty feet. Again, the, uh, project amenities, ponds, landscape buffers, and of course, Tidewater One is already developed with a hundred and sixty townhomes. Lots are shown here, um, twenty-foot, twenty-four-foot, and fifty-foot. Um, the setbacks are, are fairly typical of, of comparable zoning districts, uh, with the exception of the townhomes, uh, they, they do, uh, for example, the side setback of zero is a little unusual, a little low. Open space plan is presented here, um, in the end, over forty percent of the property would be preserved in some form of open space, whether that's the, uh, conservation area along Oleander, that's about five acres, uh, the buffers are about two and a half acres, uh, then you've got ponds, uh, another four acres or so, uh, recreation areas. Uh, all in all, it holds about seventeen acres of, of open space. And you can see, looking at this schematic, uh, the trail system, uh, we have sidewalks, uh, along both sides of the street, as well as, as kind of an off, off-street trail system to provide for, uh, recreation amenity as well. Buffers, um, some generous buffers, uh, to the north, we have, uh, forty-foot buffer and a twenty-five-foot buffer, a, a joint- To the north, we have 40-foot buffer and a 25-foot buffer adjoining single-family residences. To the east, we have anywhere between 25 and 50 feet buffering along those residences and 30 feet for the auto dealer. To the south, we have a 25-foot buffer. And to the west, along Oleander, we have considerable buffers that range between around 120 feet and 400 feet. So I think you will, that canopy effect will remain on the east side of Oleander in the preservation area. There will be a 61-foot buffer between the single-family component and the townhomes. This shows the buffer essentially, that would be a wall, I'm sorry, a fence or a wall with hedges on either side of it, and then of course, large shade trees spaced 30 feet The lake litorals, this shows kind of the landscaping that would go along with the ponds in here, the litoral plantings in Upland Transition Zone. There is a street tree plan for the neighborhood, which will help improve the appearance and the function of these, of the sidewalks and the streets with shade. There are a lot of trees on the property. You can see these protected trees as shown in the applicant's environmental impact assessment. This is a kind of a light overlay, but you can see that with the design that's in place, most of these trees, a great majority of the trees, will be removed from the site. Actually, deviates to be removed of diameter breast height, about 75% of that will be removed. So there is significant tree loss in this, which you would expect in more of a dense development, where you don't really have the room to preserve and save the trees. Transportation impacts, around 1,600 daily trips, 122 in the morning peak hour and 155 in the afternoon peak hour. The study looked at intersections in the area and concluded that the intersections were operated, expected to operate at a level of service D or better. That's not great, but it's not failing. It did note that Sunshine Boulevard in US 1, there's a U-turn lane there, functioning at level of, sorry, Sunrise Boulevard, my bad. LOS E, so LOS E does come close to failing, but that U-turn lane can handle the queuing according to the traffic study, and there is an additional U-turn opportunity to the north of Olrich. The traffic impact report determined that there was not a warrant for Oleander turn lanes, and there has been a US 1 southbound turn lane that's already been constructed for Tidewater 1. And there's not capacity issues so much in terms of just to kind of the look at road capacity and volumes. However, there are some safety concerns apparent to all. I think the area has some substandard roads. The worst one is Sager. Olrich is not great, and there's a lot of driveways on it. I think the traffic will be increasing on all roads around it. There are no sidewalks along Oleander, and it is, the shoulders are narrow, and it is a substandard road in that regard. And of course, US 1, the problem is always with just the predominance of U-turns on that roadway because of DOT's access management standards. This shows some of these roads in this area, I think Sager on the left, you can see, it would be difficult for two cars to really pass, come in different directions. Oleander, you can see, has a rural look to it, it's, there's really not many places to pull off, there's a swale and a drop-off pretty quickly. Olrich, of course, another road that will be, traffic will be increased on, lots of driveways, substandard width. The trip distribution, it's about, keep in mind, the single-family traffic only goes to Oleander and the townhome traffic only goes to US 1. So they are, I don't know if bifurcated is the right word, but that single-family traffic, most of it, 60% of it is heading north on Oleander up to Midway Road, and 40% is going south over to US 1. The townhome traffic is evenly split between northbound and southbound. I think folks are either going to Fort Pierce or Fort St. Lucie. We did look at the townhome pedestrian circulation, we were concerned because they were proposed with sidewalks on one side of the street. This is kind of a confusing schematic, but what we worked with the applicant in the townhome section, since there will be more people density, folks out there walking around, enjoying nice weather. The red sidewalks are the existing planned, I should say sidewalks. What we want to accomplish is the equivalent of a sidewalk on both sides of the street. And you'll see these green on the left and the right-hand side, the green, this is, replaces the purple sidewalk essentially, and it's improved in the sense that you don't have driveway interruptions, you have the abilities for folks to walk without having to worry about traffic concerns. So you're achieving that. And the yellow sidewalks would remain, those are the ones that are planned. But what we've recommended is a system here where each of these streets would have the functional equivalent of a sidewalk on each side. Some of these, of course, would have sidewalks to the rear as opposed to on the street side. We did hear from the St. Lucie County TPO, Transportation Planning Organization, who recommended, I think the applicant had used a 2.0 historical growth rate, and this recommended a, what they felt was more realistic, a 2.5 historical growth rate for the impact study. Also recommended some technical stuff here, the analysis of the changes to the growth allocations, and to help adjust the regional model to this development essentially. These two recommendations are incorporated into the conditions. So the residential urban future land use map category does allow density up to five units per acre, doesn't entitle it at five units per acre, but you can go up to five units per acre. The project density is right around 4.3, so it's not up at that very maximum. The properties located in the urban service area, there is the ability, and I think some that has happened to a certain degree, to transition density from the east with the townhomes to the west with the single-family homes. The 5.1 acres of habitat preservation along Oleander, I think, is a responsible act by the applicant to preserve kind of the beauty of Oleander, the rural character, the wildlife, and everything that goes with it. The applicant is providing recreational amenities to provide for that neighborhood park level of support. Short blocks support more walking, and I think the open space is fairly good. It's above the 35% that's required, 40.8%. There are some issues, I think we know, the traffic impacts, we talked about the substandard roadways, the problem with the U-turns on US 1, so any traffic impacts that are going to happen, and they will, will exacerbate some of those problems that are already occurring. We did express concern about the tree removal. We are recommending some standards in our recommendation, which we'll get to, which essentially calls for the applicant to plan carefully to save trees strategically whenever possible. And to point out that this is a site plan review as well, and there are criteria that allows the county to reduce density in cases where public facilities are essentially strained and environmental impacts are clear and present. Staff recommends evaluation of proposal and a recommendation of approval to the B O C C with the following conditions: E R D, of course, an updated environmental impact; secondly, finalized tree mitigation plan; number three, this is a very technical condition pertaining to green cocoa plums, which I will not get into now. Of course, listed species survey will be required, and removal of invasive species plants from the site. Planning department conditions, we have a number of them, to refine the open space plan, enlarging the loop trail that's south of the northwest pool, and providing key links that kind of substantiate the trail system and provide for opportunities, different walking opportunities. And of course, the need to locate additional benches and pet waste stations, dog walking becomes more popular every year. Also recommended more open space, I think there's some ability to take some of these kind of throwaway areas that are not in lots, and essentially use them as pocket parks. We suggested some themes, for example, here, providing for some parking at that southeast, where the townhomes and the single-family meet, some limited parking there. Limiting the amount of impervious space in side yard setbacks in the single-family area, essentially so that you don't have a high degree of impervious surface. And I think number 10 is the important one for us, in the sense, the applicant really needs to do a little better, in our opinion, at preserving the protected trees, particularly where you have maximum concentrations of trees. I think simple tweaks can be done in those cases to, without losing a lot of lots, to essentially save more trees. Larger lot sizes would also be an appropriate measure, we believe, that they would allow for less grading and impact of trees. You see some of the larger lots where the houses can better coexist with trees. And we did provide in your staff report, potential, just a very preliminary look at where you might get some bang for the buck in terms of saving trees. Talked a little about the townhome sidewalks, we feel we've achieved the effective pedestrian circulation in that townhome component with our recommendations. We also recommend for the townhome section, traffic calming, the Tidewater 1 will now be carrying all the traffic for Tidewater 2, and we want to make sure that the design provides for folks to slow down as they proceed through that neighborhood. So we do want to increase and supplement final site plan buffers for the single-family ones to the north and for the car dealer to the east, because the potential bright lights and activity from the car dealer could impact the residence. Talked about the 2.5% growth rate transportation and the other TPO change. And 25 feet of right-of-way along Oleander within 90 days of site plan approval will be transferred to the county. Public works, subdivision improvement agreement and bonding is required, site development permit is required, six-foot sidewalk required along Oleander. The Board of County Commissioners may authorize a B and L instead of that sidewalk, construction of that sidewalk. Thank you, Mr. Chair, happy to answer any questions.
All right, bring it back to the board, do you have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Sure do.
Staff, can we go back to the conditions of approval number 16? Kind of glanced over that one as part of the T I R conducted analysis, excuse me, of the changes to the growth allocations in the T A Zs in the latest version of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Model, on which the L R T P is based, and the resultant impacts to the transportation network. My big question here is, how are these trip distribution percentages calculated?
I'm going to let, I think Corey can speak to it too, but I think their transportation experts here can speak to it as well.
Okay, please. How are the, how are the trip distribution percentages calculated?
Chair Benner, Commissioner Odell, I think the applicant's engineer is best to describe how they assign those, but typically, there's a consideration of current volumes on the roadway, potential destinations, for instance, the commercial along Midway Road, access out to US Highway 1 with Olrich if we're talking about the single-family for townhomes. I think it's, with access on US 1, it's more of a split consideration where employment would be schools to the north or to the southeast. So I think they would, the traffic engineer for the applicant would weigh in on that further.
Okay, it seems like the distribution for the, for the townhome development is the same as Tidewater 1, but as you know, there's a different access point. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, one.
Mr. Bradley?
I don't know, Corey, you might remember, you're an encyclopedia here. Tidewater 1, was there this many tree requirements?
There was a net impact of trees, therefore, there was a tree mitigation responsibility for Tidewater 1. I think that was certainly one of the components of staff's initial and throughout the process, our recommendation to preserve more trees. I think the balance of their tree mitigation costs and responsibilities after any onsite plannings was in the ballpark of $400,000. I think the applicant can pinpoint the specifics, but that's essentially mitigation at $200 per inch of native trees that are of protection or mitigation thresholds. So if it's a six-inch, 10-inch, or sorry, eight-inch tree, no mitigation responsibility, but when we get north of 12 inches, if you're impacting more of the native inches onsite, you are responsible to mitigate and make up for that. That can be additional plannings onsite above and beyond code minimums, payment of $200 per inch if accepted by the Board of County Commissioners, or sometimes there's off-site mitigation through acquisition of other lands for preservation purposes that are of comparable quality.
Because it, from an area, it looked like it was pretty tree, like the subject property. So you're saying they bought their way out?
For Tidewater 1 to the east, yes. That was the predominant form of tree mitigation when they were impacting more trees than they were preserving on that site.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be off-screen of this exhibit to the southeast.
Yeah, I didn't hear you.
Mr. Lowndes.
Mr. Crowe, Mr. Benton, can you go to the aerial or whatever shows the access from this project to, there you go, are we taking Tidewater 2, which is we're talking about now, correct?
Yes.
And going traffic through Tidewater 1 to US 1? Is that what I'm seeing?
That's correct.
So we're going to funnel traffic from Tidewater 1 through Tidewater 2, or Tidewater 2 through Tidewater 1, as well as putting traffic on Oleander Avenue?
Commissioner Lowndes, to clarify, half of that was accurate, in that the townhomes proposed within Tidewater 2, they would have access through Tidewater 1. It's likely that Salisbury Circle would be the majority accommodations of those trips. So US Highway 1 would remain the only access for the existing townhomes and the proposed additional townhomes. There's not a functional vehicular connection between the newly proposed townhomes in Tidewater 2 and the proposed single-family lots in Tidewater 2. There would be a stabilized emergency access. We would expect this to be gated off with an OX box, key flip switch for fire trucks and ambulance access should there be the need for secondary access, a pedestrian pathway or sidewalk connecting the communities. But the single-family homes at 90 lots would have access to Oleander, but not US 1, and the townhomes would not have direct access to Oleander through the project boundaries.
So we're going to take the townhouses and shove it on US 1, is that correct?
That's the proposal.
And we're going to take the single-family houses development and push it to Oleander.
That is, that is on.
Which is a secondary road, narrow and congested already.
That is the proposal before you.
How far is this development from the White City Elementary School?
Could run some dimensions, but I would suggest between one and a half miles and possibly two miles to the north.
Let's, there will be a time for public comment.
I'll take a look.
Let's let staff answer the question the best they can.
We'll take a look to ensure accuracy. There's also a private school situated on the east side of Oleander.
You've got a Montessori store and a school in there someplace.
That is on the east side, south, but I was referencing that this board saw it under the nomenclature of the crossings, church, they were adding a school for St. James Christian Academy, and that has since changed hands. That was a 2018 proposal after their site was impacted in the former Orange Blossom Business Center. So that's, linear distance to the north boundary is about three quarters of a mile to the entrance. It's eight tenths of a mile and about a mile to their center.
Mr. Benton, we're about anywhere from three quarters of a mile to a mile from the White City Elementary School. The reason I ask is, does the traffic consider what the traffic is between, say, 7:30 and 9 o'clock for the school, and 2:30 in the afternoon, and 4 o'clock in the afternoon as additional traffic on Ole as additional traffic on Oleander? Is that figured into this somewhere?
So Commissioner Lowndes, how different assessments for traffic work? There's the overall trip generation of how many vehicles travel on a roadway. In this instance, we're talking about Oleander, what's existing today, what's anticipated if no additional approvals of scale are completed, or what's happening based upon existing projects. There's the AM and PM peak hours, which typically we're looking between 7 and 9, as you indicated, and usually that 4 to 6 range. And you would look at the different uses and their impacts and what that, what that behavior pattern is. So what we would be capturing today in a traffic study is what are the cars on the roadway now in AM peak hours? What are they in the PM? And what are they overall throughout a 24-hour period? Then for residential development, what's the typical pattern? If you have single-family homes, how many of those cars are leaving in the morning? If they're going to work, heading to drop kids off at school, going to a golf course, or if some folks are assumed to be retirees, maybe they're hanging out at home or going to the beach. So there's an array of different variables that go into the traffic analysis, but it's intended to capture what's existing and being used on the road today, what's anticipated independent of this project, and then what occurs if you add this project.
Mr. Benton, I, it, traffic reports are hard for dirt-rode idiots like me to figure out sometimes, but there is a tremendous amount of traffic on Oleander that is being used as access from Fort St. Lucie to Fort Pierce and back so that they don't have to do the congestion on US 1. And it's only getting worse and getting more congested on Oleander. And we're going to dump a lot more traffic on it, and then at school time, I have a hard time with that project. But that one concept with this development of traffic alone, let alone before we get into the drainage of this project, I hope somebody from their group can answer some traffic problems for me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else for staff? Are we ready for the applicant? Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners, for the record. My name is Bob Rains. I'm a land use attorney with the Gunster Law Firm, and here this evening on behalf of the applicant. And we appreciate the opportunity to present this project to you this evening. In a moment, I'm going to have George Messimer with Cutler-Herring come up and make a presentation. Commissioner Odell, Commissioner Lowndes, we do have our traffic engineers here this evening, and would be happy to, you know, have her come up and answer some of your questions too. So we'll be glad to follow up with that. This is, again, I just emphasized, a project that has a future land use designation of RU and allows the five up to five units per acre. We are proposing a PUD, and when Mr. Messimer comes through, he'll go through some of the benefits of having it done as a PUD. We also had some meetings with the neighbors, and he'll address some of the, talk about some of the ways we've addressed some of their concerns, and I know they'll have some other comments, I'm sure. So with that, I'll invite Mr. Messimer to come up, but I would like also, if I could, Mr. Chair, to reserve time to respond to any comments that we need from the staff from, or from you all or from the neighbors.
You got it.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, George Messimer with Cutler and Herring. Start with just some brief introductions with our team. Again, I'd just like to emphasize here in the beginning, you know, the local professional groups that we rely on, applicant relies on, to do the studies, do the traffic analysis, do the environmental analysis, the land planning exercises, going through concept after concept, laying out the different layouts, the, you know, orientation of houses, the landscape buffer designs, the widths, all of that. So really great team involved and, you know, very experienced with decades of experience in the field. So we have Cutler and Herring as the land planners and landscape architects for the project, our civil engineer, Caulfield and Wheeler, our traffic engineer, Pinder Troutman and Consulting, and our environmental consultant, Aquatic Research. And again, we do have those representatives here to answer questions that you might have. Applicant tonight is Meredith Holmes, National Builder, with extensive experience in development, and really the primary objective behind this proposed development is creating some attainable housing within St. Lucie County. I think we can all appreciate larger lots, you know, bigger houses, but, you know, to an extent, we do have to be responsible to existing residents and future residents in providing some attainable housing options, and this development will provide some of We went over some of the basic history of Tidewater 1. It is an approved townhome community at the, near US 1, the entrance there. We are proposing to connect this Tidewater 2 PUD to Tidewater 1, only connecting the townhome portion. We had several neighborhood meetings. It's very important with projects such as this, infill developments, that we meet with the neighbors, understand their concerns, and try to address them as best as we can. So there were four neighborhood meetings done for this project, two with specific communities adjacent to the site, one very specific on drainage issues. We went over the project location, I won't harp on that too much. We talked a little bit about transitional densities already. Very common planning strategy is present along the entire US 1 corridor, pretty much everywhere you look, where you have very intense commercial and residential densities and intensities along the corridor. As you transition away both east and west, less so, you have communities that start to transition into single-family densities, and that's exactly what we've proposed, very consistent with the existing pattern of development, trying to put the more intense and attainable housing types towards US 1 and lower-density housing towards Oleander and the larger communities over there. Some of the benefits of the style of development being proposed as a PUD, we have designed stormwater drainage systems to handle up to 100-year, three-day flood event. A lot of the existing residential lots surrounding the property are larger lots, very nice, and they don't have a central stormwater drainage system. They're either going to pitch it to the road, you know, or they're going to have to dig their own ponds to manage their stormwater. The civil engineering consultants talk about drainage in the area, go over that in a little bit more detail. The predominant flow is east to west towards the river or the surrounding areas. Additionally, as part of the benefit of this planned community design, we're able to provide a lot of those common open area spaces within the community. Now, what we have proposed with this community is that those pedestrian sidewalks through the community from Oleander to US 1 would be publicly accessible. So we weren't going to be restricting those to the neighborhood. So providing more connectivity within the area is very important. Again, we are providing, would be required to provide the 25-foot dedication along Oleander, widening that road, allowing for some improvements. Again, it's only adjacent to our property, we understand that. But we did pay specific concern to that street along Oleander and those residents, providing additional buffering, as well as limiting the access from the townhome portion to Oleander. That was a specific request that came out of one of those neighborhood meetings, where we were, residents were concerned if we were connecting all the way through, then some of the townhome residents might want to exit on Oleander, worsening the traffic there. So restricting it to the single-family product only, limiting the impact along Oleander. Go over some of the acreages. The Phase 1 area, a little over 18 acres, Phase 2 being the 42.9, which is Tidewater 2, what we're speaking about tonight. Again, future land use allowing up to five units per acre, and we are proposing 4.3. Just some land use and zoning maps, we can skip that. Looking a little bit closer at the site plan, we talked again about the protections along Oleander, providing over 100-foot buffers to those existing residents, something that was very important out of those neighborhood meetings, and preserving as much of that canopy that's there. Additional information within our environmental assessment, this property does have a lot of oak trees on the site, but it's also very densely populated with Brazilian peppers. So it's a disturbed habitat classification. It's not a native habitat classification, even though there are those oak trees there. And so as part of the process going through site planning, the next step, we would have to do a formal analysis on the condition of those trees. And it's expected that a lot of them will be in poor condition because of that heavy presence of exotics. We'll have to remove all the exotics, and then we'll evaluate the health of those trees as, through that process. But we are proposing to preserve as much of those densely populated areas, and again, we commit to working with staff through that site plan process to preserve even more of those high-quality trees as much as we can. We appreciate that comment. And we talked about those transitional densities, providing majority of the density towards the commercial corridor along the, next to the car dealership and the approved Tidewater 1 townhome development, while the single-family densities are towards Oleander and the existing single-family community. Taking a look at some of those perimeter buffers, again, densely populated, where we have shorter or narrower buffers, again, 40 feet in some cases, 25 feet at the narrowest, we are providing a berm, perimeter berm, with fencing and additional densely populated landscape. And then the areas, the wider buffers on Oleander, we're preserving a lot of that existing canopy coverage, having that mature canopy tree there, and again, more than 100 feet. In addition to this, the lots that are directly adjacent to those existing residents along Oleander, we're committed to limiting those to one-story units, so they won't be, the ability to have a two-story product adjacent to those homes. Again, additional protection for those residents, making sure their privacy is secure. I think we'll jump into the traffic, and we'll have our traffic consultant come up and summarize her report as well, so.
Good evening. Excuse me, I'm Rebecca Malkady with Pinder Troutman Consulting, and we were brought on board to conduct the traffic impact study for this project. Originally, the site plan that was brought to us showed complete full access between the townhome property and the single-family home property. And we conducted the traffic impact study so that traffic could flow east and west to US 1 to Oleander. But as George has mentioned, after feedback from the community, our team discussed bifurcating the site so that only the townhome traffic would go out to US 1 and only the single-family traffic would go out to Oleander. So we revised our traffic impact study to incorporate that concept, as well as to answer a few comments that the county's traffic engineering consultant requested. That result of that traffic impact study shows that the level of service standards of St. Lucie County were met, and as a matter of fact, the two directly accessed links of US 1 and Oleander were not only operating at level of service C, but less than 60% of the capacity that the county defines for that roadway, for both roadways. We do understand that there are two TPO comments that were made. One was regarding growth rates. We did use a 2% growth rate, and we will be updating our report in the next few weeks to accommodate the 2.5%. We ran the link analyses already, and there is no change in the results of our analysis based on the extra half percent growth. But it should also be noted that our original, the study that was approved by the county's traffic consultant, was 191 units over the last few months. The site plan has been refined a bit, and we're now dropping it down to the 184 units that you're looking at this evening. And we anticipate that our updated traffic study will be reviewed by the county and found, find that it is within the standards. I will quickly just address the distribution question that one of you made. The distribution for the townhome portion of the site was based on the approved Tidewater 1 distribution. That was done by another traffic consultant, but it was approved by the county, and the county's traffic engineer did ask that we follow that distribution. For the single-family site, we, in general, follow that distribution. If you look at Midway Road or down south to Kidderman and US 1, that distribution's the same. It's slightly different right at the driveway due to the connections to US 1. And I'd be happy to answer questions if they come up.
At this time, I'd just like to point out as well, the entrance on Oleander, we are proposing to have our school bus stop within the community. It is wide enough to meet all the school board requirements for school bus turnarounds, as well, there would be a covered waiting area and parking areas as well, and we would expect that that school bus stop could be available to the community in the area as well for, a bus stop for their kids that they could go to and pick them up from as well. And at this time, I think we'll go over our drainage summary as well, so we'll bring up our civil engineer, go over that.
Hi, Dan, my name is Tim Foster with Caulfield and Wheeler. We're the civil engineer for the project.
Tim, step up to the microphone a little bit closer.
Sorry, sir, is that better?
Yeah.
Once again, Tim Foster with Caulfield and Wheeler, we're the civil engineer for the project. I won't bore you with a whole bunch of drainage, but a couple of key issues in this that I want to point out to you. Currently, this site has a 24-inch outfall pipe that runs west under Oleander into a ditch system that continues west and then goes under Citrus and eventually out to the river. The reason I'm mentioning this is, is it's unrestricted right now. What we'd be proposing is a typical stormwater management system, gutters, culverts, pipes going to lake and possibly bio swales in the natural areas to provide water quality attenuation and meeting all regulatory requirements. And the reason I say this is the most restrictive criteria for this project is North St. Lucie's 10-year, three-day elevation or requirement of only two inches of discharge. The rainfall in that time is eight and a half inches. So what you're looking at is slowing down the discharge by pre-development condition. The other thing I'd say is, when we evaluated the site initially, we found a couple of things of note. One was a free-flowing artesian well that we went ahead and capped, that was artificially increasing the water table for both Tidewater 1 site and this site. Another one was the system of culverts and ditches along, going west to the river, needed some clean out and work on it, particularly the culverts have some vegetation overgrowth, and we're talking about cleaning them out with the county, and the ditch that goes from Lone Pine, I think there's a picture of, no, there's not actually a picture of it, but next slide. So there's a couple of pictures of it, and that's, what you're looking at is Citrus Avenue looking west. It's pretty overgrown, and that eventually makes its way to the county preserve, not to the river. So that was one thing we had, went ahead and surveyed and identified as a blockage in the system that's impeding drainage flow. We've had a couple of different meetings with Lone Pine, which is the residential community just to the north of there, that ditch bisects their property line, and working with them and the county to improve the drainage condition in the area. I won't bore you with too much else, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but overall, what our goal was to improve the condition of the area for the residents and our own residents. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
We'll get to the question at the end. But I think really the important piece of that part of the presentation is that the post-development discharge from this site is less than the pre-development discharge in the existing conditions of the area. Looking at the architecture proposed, again, for the community, the townhome units as well as the single-family, very well-built products, concrete block, meeting all development codes, as well as providing nice articulation between the buildings. The two different townhome units, as mentioned in staff's presentation, again, the wider units tend to be the end units on either end of the building, the 20-foot units would be the center units of the buildings. Again, going over the community meetings, there were four that were held at these dates, which were very important priority for the applicant as well as our development team to understand the neighborhood concerns and try to address as many as we could. Based on that community feedback, we increased separation at the north, northeast buffer to screen from neighbors, as well as the 100-foot buffer in natural area, the minimum 100-foot, actually, in two locations, it's well over 300 feet wide from the community to Oleander. Preservation of large existing material within the site, so again, we're already prepared to preserve much of the existing native tree material that's within the site in areas what's currently proposed as houses, and we'll continue to evaluate that with staff. to evaluate that with staff, again, through the condition assessment reports of those existing trees. Restricting lots adjacent to existing homes to one-story, protecting privacy. We actually decreased the number of single-family and townhome units in phase two from the original proposal that went before in those neighborhood meetings. Providing pedestrian access from Oleander through the site to US One and then bisecting the traffic between the townhome units and the single-family units to prevent the townhomes from accessing along Oleander and potentially increasing traffic that way, as well as the drainage improvements being proposed. So in conclusion, single-family residences provide a smooth density transition. Again, we talked about that transition from the intense commercial corridor along US One towards the west, improving the drainage conditions. Went over it a bunch of times, I don't need to summarize it again, but we are requesting a recommendation for your approval to move forward to county commission. We're happy to answer any questions that you have moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board with questions. We want to start down on that end. Mr. Lounds?
Hell, I don't know where to start.
You want to start on this end?
Can I talk to your hydrologist for a minute? Can you come back up? Put up your screen that's got the water flow. There you go. Are all three of these ponds connected together now?
Yes, sir.
At this, through underwater?
Yeah, interconnected pipes, they'll be connected together and then eventually go to a control structure where flow is limited prior to discharge.
And it's natural flow?
Yes.
There's no pumps involved?
No pumps, no pumps, sir.
The water's going to come off this land and go down the county ditch, or is that all those private ditches?
There's a portion that's private, a portion is county-owned, and then a portion is through Lone Pine with easements over top of the majority of it dedicated to county for stormwater and access purposes. So it's kind of a hodgepodge of historically what's been going on in that area.
You're a hydrologist, right?
Yes.
How many inches of rainfall fall in an acre-inch?
It's one inch times the acre, so.
Pardon?
It's one inch times the acre, so one acre-inch, if it's one inch on an acre.
One acre-inch of water is a hundred, is twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four gallons.
Okay.
You've got a lot of gallons falling in this thing in a two-inch rain.
That's correct.
And those ponds are designed to handle two inches in the afternoon and another inch and a half the day after tomorrow?
Yeah, they are, and they're allowed to discharge only minimal. So that's compared to what's going on right now where there's no restriction, just a twenty-four inch pipe that's free-flowing out. You'll have some storeful storage, but beyond that, everything right now is flowing out. So the design system will hold that and have a maximum during the ten-year, three-day event of two inches discharge and then slowly continue to discharge after the storm event until the system goes back down to natural control.
My concern is not getting off of your property at your property, it's what happens to it once it leaves your property. Those ditches right now aren't adequate enough to handle that excess water, is it?
Well, we'd be reducing the water that's going through as far as the timeframe and stretching out the time that our, our flow leaves our site. So there'd be a less impact on that, but I do agree with you that those ditches need to be improved, along with the culverts that go into the roadway. And that's exactly why we've been meeting with the county and the Lone Pine Homeowners Association to, to see what we can do to help that situation.
And that'll happen before you get your final?
If the project goes forward, my understanding is that's what we're going to be doing and that's my recommendation as well. For the ditches that you saw, definitely remove invasives, we're going to try to minimize the impact to them as far as aesthetics, but increase the flow and quality of the flow.
I'm concerned about the total impact of the drainage in White City.
Well, I'm not going to disagree with you. There's a lot of problems with the drainage in White City and that's one of the things that we, our initial public meetings, outreach meetings, that residents told me and that's why I started investigating this issue and looking to go beyond our project and help the problem. You know, our project is going to reduce the amount of flow that's coming off during these storms and then just bring that out to a much longer timeframe. So once the storm recedes, we're still going to slowly discharge rather than overwhelm the system that's there right now. But beyond that, like I said, there's other issues with maintenance in the system that's there right now that we're trying to address to improve the whole drainage system in the area and reduce flooding out there. Obviously, it's an old system, you know, there's a current problems out there right now, but we're trying to be a good neighbor and help as best we can to improve the situation.
You're one of the first developments that's come along, decided they wanted to help the neighbors improve their drainage.
Well, it's not just the neighbors, the way I see it, it's our future residents as well. And I think we have an obligation to try to improve the situation. I'm just being honest with you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or?
I've got a quick question for you. So you said that it's going to reduce the outflow of water, but you're also reducing the amount of pervious surfaces on the property, so it can slow down the runoff, but it's also limiting by a lot how much of the ground can absorb water.
Some is going to go into the lake and there will be definitely an increase in total runoff, okay? But the way the system will be controlled, it'll be after the storm event. So you're looking at, like I said, I'm just giving you the ten-year, three as an example. You have eight and a half inches of rainfall and we're only allowed to discharge two of them in that three-day period. So we're going to, our lakes will stage up and we're going to hold that and slowly bleed off after the storm and not overwhelm the system. But yes, you're correct, anytime you develop an area, you're going to have more overall runoff unless you have a tremendous amount of lakes. And the lakes and detention areas and bioswales will limit some of that, but no matter what you do, any impervious area you add, water's not going to be able to go in the soil. So I'm not disagreeing with you at all. It's more of a timing aspect in the way it works.
And then when you, the other ditches, I know we have public comments submitted by ratings, so I'm assuming there's going to be a lot from?
Yes.
The Lone Pine community. The ditch by the Lone Pine community, is that one Lone Pine's in charge of that or the county in charge of that?
That's a loaded question. And the reason I say that is it appears that Lone Pine, it has some maintenance obligation for it, but there's a couple of agreements that happened before Lone Pine that happened in the twenties that I can't pull up to tell what those were for. And they were for drainage and access. So I'm not sure, you know, I've requested title to pull that information, have not seen it yet. So it looks like at least part of the obligation would be on Lone Pine. I'd also say that, you know, these, these roadway where we're picking up and going under the roadway, don't just go under the roadway. And the roadways I'm talking about are Oleander and Citrus. There's also drainage, draining the roadway swales. So part of those roadways are also picked up and that would be county drainage going through there. So the maintenance obligation, I'm honestly not sure of. Maybe that's a thing for the county attorney to weigh in on. I'm looking at it more of it's a problem and how can I, you know, improve the situation, regardless of whose, you know, obligation it is. Other thing, just for your point, is that ditch is actually on the property line of Lone Pine, so half the ditch is on Lone Pine, half is on the properties to the south of there. So it's even more convoluted.
Makes sense.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dell.
Can we pull up the transportation impacts?
Sure.
Let's do the hydrology stuff first with badly and then we'll circle around the traffic after.
John?
Okay.
You've got a water question.
Yeah. So being around this once or twice, how are your ponds different than ones that are being built now that before they even get a rainstorm, our groundwater's filled them up three-quarters of the way, as it says.
The ponds, we're just so I can understand.
Because you're saying that you're going to retain water and then you're going to slowly discharge it.
Well, every, every development has to meet stormwater regulations and they're required to hold that on site, whether it's in the ponds and detention areas or even on the roads, they're going to do that depending on the amount of rainfall.
But I'm talking about reality, right? Reality says that groundwater, and we can go take a trip over to the couple if you want, groundwater fills it up, it's holding three-quarters, arguably probably even more. Then when this rainstorm, these afternoon storms hit, now all of a sudden, roads that I drive are overflowing by those.
I'd have to see what, which ones you're talking about and it would depend if that project had a true outfall or not. A lot of times if a project does not have an outfall, there's no real mechanism to draw those down other than percolation through the ground and the water table.
So how's yours different?
We're, we're planning on using the outfall that's already there, the historic one that's actually lower than the control elevation on the site.
And then when you outfall to get to, if you go to that ditch, I'm very familiar with that little ditch because it is kind of a little bit of a controversy between those five neighbors and Lone Pine.
Yeah, I understand.
But it is, would you agree, very inferior getting even to that ditch?
No, there's actually, on our site, there's a head wall and a twenty-four inch pipe stubbed out that's taking flow from right now on our site without us.
Not, not your site, I'm saying from your site to that ditch that makes a little pipe.
I haven't been able to analyze it and look at the whole area to tell you that. I can tell you that looking at the vegetation, that's definitely a problem there. I think there's also sediment in those boxes that are limiting flow. Whether it's sized properly is a very hard question to answer without knowing the total contributing area and how it was designed.
It's pretty inferior. I mean, it's something that was.
Let's say there's problems with it. I don't want to say that, I'm an engineer, so I don't want to tell you that it's inferior without having a number to back it up.
Right, I understand, it's always, but it's a product that's probably seventy, eighty years old and.
And to the point of that as well, I think there's some serious maintenance issues. So I think the maintenance program in that will help. Obviously, you know, this area's been low and has been flooding issues for, my understanding is for quite some time, so.
The other issue is who pays for all that?
Well, as far as the improvements on there, we were talking about doing that if we're, if we developed this product as being a good neighbor and helping the flow on there.
All the way to Lone Pine?
Mm-hmm. So we'd be cleaning out a couple of boxes and then going and removing invasives. I walk the ditch with people Lone Pine and we identified certain problems. You know, there's a lot of vegetation that we don't want to go in there and rip out because you're going to have problems with the neighbors that want to be buffered from each other. But there are, I think, certain opportunities in there where there's certain invasives that are growing in there and buildup of sediment that we can go in and remove some manually and some by machine and greatly improve the condition.
Is that a requirement by the county?
No. This is us trying to go above and beyond and honestly be a good neighbor.
Hydrology.
Okay. Hydrology. Picture is worth a thousand words here. Mr. Crowe, we have a letter from White City Improvement Club, could you pull that up, please? Screenshot it up. And we'll go beyond the letter. They sent some photos as well, along with their concerns. There you go. Now, there were some photos attached to those. It would be the photos that were attached to that particular letter that you just pulled up.
Certainly, thank, thank you for patience. I think Mr. Crowe had loaded the written letters themselves, not the attached photos, but we will have those attached photos in just a few moments.
Okay.
That captured some rainstorm events in the area and adjacent roadways.
While we pull that up, do you want to ask your water question?
Sure.
So big picture, you know, drainage-wise, you have, like you said, a ten-year storm and it drops inches of rain around.
It does, yeah, same difference.
How much did that get stored in the soil in your professional?
I'd have to run the final numbers for this, this plan has been changing. Ballpark a couple inches. And that couple inches is only going to be, so I just want to qualify this as well. So in the summertime, when you have a rainy season all the time, the soil's going to be saturated for most of the time. The soil storage, a true slow storage in this site and any other one would be, you know, after you've been dry for a while, you're going to get, depending on the depth of soil, two to three inches on that site, which is a decent amount, you know, but still not.
So you're going to have, so right now we have five inches of water running off of it?
Probably more. And the reason I say more is you're going to get some soil storage, but the, the existing invert of that pipe is lower than the control elevation of the site. So it's wet right now. So there's not a lot of limiting factor. There's, I'm sure there's some areas where water's pooling up and you're getting some retention on there and you're getting some soil storage as well, but you're definitely getting, I mean, I think five is a safe number, probably it's conservative, you're probably getting much more like six or seven, just being honest with you. Still way more than the two that we'd be allowed to discharge, so.
Correct, so in the ten-year storm event on a controlled site like we're proposing, we're only discharging?
Yeah, the most restrictive criteria, and that's why I just mentioned that one as a reference.
It's almost, I mean, even if you did it conservatively, if you were to forage as a discharge, you're.
Yeah, I mean, call whatever you want on that, but yeah, regardless of what's going to happen. And remember, it's not complete discharge, this is discharge during that storm event and then slowly the site's going to bleed down based on the elevation of the lakes to push the rest of the water out. But the thought process behind that is that's after the storm, after the ditch has been receded and everything else, so it reduces the flooding and the impact to the downstream condition.
I mean, significant, I mean, probably even less than half.
Yes.
It's a significant amount of water that we hold, that we hold out.
Yeah, yeah, that's a requirement of us, that's, that's the most restrictive one that's North St. Lucie's in this area, so. And that's for any project, they all have different requirements from south water, but I wanted to give you the most restrictive one. Just, I think that one paints a clear, pretty clear picture of what's going on in that site and the difference between the pre and post. You know, this is, and not a typical site because you have that condition and, and for this, you know, vacant field or, you know, on, I call it a very vegetated site, I think it was in Orange Grove in the past, but that would, that, those, those pipes and culverts were installed probably at some point years ago to drain Oleander and Citrus and including this site, so.
It probably had a shallow water table there, you haven't mentioned it.
No, we had, and I'm, in Tidewater One, I have information for, I'm the engineer for that one as well, our control was eight. And we actually experienced a higher water table because of this site and artesian well that was flooding. So that, that's another thing that residents told me from Lone Pine, that they were seeing blue water in there and that's exactly what we're seeing coming out of the artesian. So we capped that, so that's going to help the situation as well. But I'm just trying to be objective with you guys about, you know, the improvements on, I know it sounds that we're building a site, so the conventional logic is that we're going to make the situation worse, right? But the reality is especially in this case, because there's no, low limitations in discharge, that we're going to reduce the discharge especially during those storm events and probably by a considerable amount. We can talk about soil storage and I can calculate that out for you.
And if you kept going, storm event, storm event, right, so you had ten, twenty-five year, how many, how many inches of twenty-five year?
I'd have to pull it up, I don't even recall.
Just call it twelve, right?
Yeah.
It's just more and more water gets on, bigger and bigger.
But no, even at that time, we can only still discharge the, the two inches at that time.
And your controlled, you know, the controlled, you know, scenario limiting even, even less.
Yeah, so we're going to have a bleeder and then a gear.
As the storm gets bigger, it's less and less.
Exactly. Yeah, more will be stored on site, so the lakes will store the majority of it. I'd like to do some bioswales around the natural areas that'll also help with storage and those are going to provide treatment for water quality attenuation as well. And then we'll go to a control structure and discharge, you know, within allowed limits, no pump system, so, you know, and also just the knowledge on that is, that's the peak discharge allowed that we're allowed to do for most of these systems. So it's not going to be doing that continuously, that's only at the absolute worst condition that we hit that. With a pump, you can maintain that constantly, that's not what we're proposing though.
Just wanted to go through the screenshots here, that Seager Avenue, can we go to the next one? That's Oleander.
Where, just from my knowledge, where, where is Seager in relation to the site? That's, that's south of us or north of us?
East, south. Could be near the land America, the Hayeslip property, near that area.
I know there's a couple other issues out there, is my understanding, and I know that the county just built a stormwater retention area to help some of this.
More than a couple, now, do, do, do we go to the next one?
I was in there full all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing is, is we wouldn't impact that area. We can't make it better, but we're, you know, by, by reducing our impact of this area, some of that water will wind up going this way.
And the next one, please.
The other thing, I, I would say in those areas, it may be worth evaluating the existing road drainage to make sure there's not debris over that as well and that will help convey some water off that area, you know? This is just speculation from what I've seen on our site.
These were neighborhood concerns.
Any more water questions when I was up here?
And if you're thinking more, I can come back, I'll be here.
Thank you much. Any other questions for the applicant or engineers?
For traffic, please. Ms. Malkady? Staff, transportation impacts.
From this one or the staff report?
Yeah, but actually, it's titled transportation impacts.
Think from the staff report?
It was a staff report. Part of the staff report. It was page eighteen. There you go. All right. At the very bottom, this is where there are not capacity issues, there are safety concerns due to the narrow road width and the lack of sidewalks along Oleander and the widespread U-turning traffic on US One. Now here is my concern, basically the same as FDOT. If you look close at this, the vicinity road network is problematic. FDOT's access control measures on US One have resulted in large numbers of U-turns. And this, this is a potential safety problem. Oleander, Ulrich, Seager, there's some standard in terms of road width. And the latter two streets will experience increased traffic, you know, as they're closest to the east-west links between Oleander and US One. you know, as they're closest to the east-west links between Oleander and US One. Again, my concern is, I mean, capacity obviously is a concern, but the major concern here is the same as FDOT. It's obviously a safety issue. You know, the, there are too many U-turns.
Yeah, to answer your question regarding US One, we did assign traffic to US One, obviously the townhome traffic, and there will be U-turns made at Sunshine and also at Easy Street. We analyzed those intersections. We looked at the U-turn pavement, the turn lane length, and there is sufficient capacity on US One for those U-turns. The DOT has established a lot of right-in, right-out configurations. They, it's called Access Management Standards, and they, they actually have shown that making a right turn and a subsequent U-turn is actually safer than if you were to have a direct left turn out onto a multi-lane roadway.
Possibly overall, but in this particular situation, the point of conflict is, does look like it would be a potential safety problem, in my opinion.
Along US One, the, the two intersections I stated with the U-turns?
Right, the two, well, you've got, like, you have Oleander, you have Ulrich, and you have Seager.
Yeah, Oleander will not have any U-turns if, if we're addressing U-turns. Seager, we know is a substandard road and as far as width, it's only approximately nine and a half, ten feet wide, something to that effect. And because of that, we anticipated that this traffic would probably not utilize Seager. It also, when it accesses US One, it's a right-in, right-out configuration, whereas a person traveling from the single family down Oleander would prefer to take Kidderman because it's a standard two-lane road and it provides full access to US One, which is also signalized. So we did not distribute any traffic to Seager because of its substandard nature.
Okay, thank you.
You consider Kidderman?
Pardon?
How do you consider Kidderman?
Kidderman is a two-lane divided road with a higher capacity than...
Have you ridden, driven down Kidderman lately?
Yes, yes, I have. Yes.
The same Kidderman I drive between US One and Oleander?
Yes.
That has zero?
It, it's a wider road than Seager, which is only ten feet wide. It allows for two-way traffic, eastbound and west.
I mean, I'm not arguing with two-way traffic. I'm saying, I mean, there's, there're bigger potholes on that road than probably most of Oleander. And, and there's no, I mean, it's grass right up through it. I mean, grass is going to grow across it any day. I would say it's a little substandard, for sure.
Well, if that's true, then it's not the applicant's responsibility to fix a substandard roadway.
This is, this is the problem we fight because there's a lot of roadways and drainage and everything else in this city and county and everything out that's really superior. And we're trying to build ten pounds of stuff and that can only hold a one-pound bag. It's almost we're overdeveloping what our infrastructure can hold. I mean, this isn't the first time anybody's heard this in this room. And it's, it's a safety matter. All of us, when I drive home tonight, I'm driving down Kidderman Road. And if it's raining, it's flowing across it. So, you know, it's, it's one hand goes in the other.
Yeah. The responsibility of the applicant is to show that it meets the traffic performance standards that's established by St. Lucie County and the St. Lucie, St. Lucie TPO. St. Lucie TPO actually publishes not only the capacities of these roadways, but the existing traffic counts and V over C ratios, volume to capacity ratios. Today, Oleander's at point four-six, so forty-six percent of its designated capacity is being utilized today. At project buildout, we're anticipating about fifty-six, fifty-seven percent.
I mean, I'm not arguing public works should probably drive down half of our roads do, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to piggyback on what she says, you know, it's not the applicant's responsibility for those type of standards to fix those, you know, county roads. So, again, we're, we're required to meet capacity requirements. And as a matter of fact, with the Florida statutes, even with capacity, if it's a failing road prior to the project, that's not even a problem for the applicant either. Now, that's not the case here. But, but understand what an applicant's responsibility is and what property under the rights are.
We understand. But I also understand, you know, we, we also are, you know, citizens out here every single day of the week driving down inferior roads. So we can all point fingers around the circle, but we all still have the same problem.
No, I, I understand, but that can't, you can't hold this property responsible for that.
I'm not holding you responsible.
But we're trying to move forward with our proposal.
Right. I'm just making the statement that she said it was, that was a superior road. In, in reality, factual, it is not a...
I think she said it was superior to Seager.
Okay, superior. So I wouldn't argue that.
Just to clarify. I don't want her to, you know, mischaracterize what she was saying. She was saying with respect to Seager.
Yeah. I mean, it's arguably that either one of them's inferior to one degree or another.
Right, okay.
So I, I think the hard part here, right, is you guys are fitting in your guidelines and you're moving forward and this, that, and the other, and that's the standards that you guys have been given, and, and you're falling in line. And then we're the people in that live in this community and we go, these roads are crap, right? And so who wrote these guidelines? Because they don't work. So that's the mix of this. I would like to move on and hear the residents and hear what they got to say, and then we can come back to all this, in my opinion.
What would you do that, can I say one thing, just finish together?
Yeah.
I know you were asking about the U-turn condition, and I was involved in the prior project as well.
Yep.
When we went initially to DOT, we wanted to do a left turn out and immediate cut. They would not allow us. They believe that the U-turn is safer in that condition. I just wanted to lay that out there. It was initially our intention to do a right-in and left-out. We thought it'd be beneficial for residents. I'm not a big fan of having them go make U-turns personally.
Right.
We were rejected on that.
There's many times that DOT throws U-turns in and we're like, hmm.
I agree.
I'm with you.
I know the history of it and she wasn't involved, so I just wanted to state that as you guys understand.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. Benton?
Chair, members of the commission, I know you're looking to open a public hearing for residents. I did want to follow up with Commissioner Odell's inquiry into the photographs that were provided as part of the letter that we received. We did find the additional exhibits. It was a very large file size, so I think that's what complicated the transmission. But if the commission wanted to see those, I'm happy to display them. So we will pull them.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So this is a public hearing. Any member of the public that wishes to address the board on this topic, please come on up to the mic. We're going to adhere to the timer system. Please state your name and address to the secretary for her records. We're going to have a lot of people. If you guys want to start staging on the right-hand or the left-hand side, your left-hand side of the room, that way we can go through it. Also, I know we've received a lot of in-writing comments about drainage issues. We have a lot of the same comments about draining, drainage message, I think the board can admit message received. We hear you guys loud and clear on it. So just take that into account as well.
Okay.
All right.
My name is Rhonda Perry. I'm a resident of White City and the president of the White City Improvement Club. And before I start any statement, can I have everybody from White City who's being affected, the members of the club and then the residents, can you just stand up and show that this is affecting our community? Thank you. Did you guys all get the letter from the White City Improvement Club, or do I need to read it?
Yes.
Okay. So I won't reiterate that, but I appreciate what many of y'all have said, especially...
Hey, Rhonda, real quick, can you state your address?
Oh, yes. Fifty, eighty West Virginia Drive. So my, I grew up on Palmetto, which is right off of Oleander. And the one statement about it's not the developer's responsibility to fix the historic drainage where there's problems, that's what we hear a lot. I, my parents' house had to be raised four foot two years ago, two to three years ago, because we have a historic drained canal next to her house that nobody has cleaned since I was a kid. So these issues, when the developments are coming in, especially the high density, if there's not designated responsibility from the county, city, whoever is supposed to be cleaning it, we are going to continue to have flooding for the residents, especially Seager and those areas up there, Echo, because they're having the same issues. But as far as the density of this project, we really feel that the density needs to be changed. It needs to be downsized. Why do we need all these big developments coming into White City? It's just like what we just had to hear about the Western County. Bo said that, Commissioner Bo said that if it's zoned agriculture, do one acre. White City basically is like half-acre lots to a quarter-acre lots, and now, right next to those lots, these residents are going to have to deal with townhouses, townhomes and all these additional houses. The traffic is so dangerous. I live off of Midway now, just west of Twenty-Fifth Street. You guys know all the accidents we're having. And we just need to, the codes, you know, the, the resources that are saying that, you know, we're up to par. I don't know who made these or who's studying these, but we have to do something to decrease density for developments, decrease the traffic on our roads, because we are raising children on these roads and in our developments, and someday they're going to be out there and they're way too dan- dangerous. So we just ask that you regulate your density for this project.
Thank you.
Hi, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Janice Douglas. I might live at sixty-three, forgive me, I'm getting over a bug. Sixty-three, eighty-five Gardena Street. That's White City also. And I have this lovely letter all written for you, and it's late, everybody's tired. The bottom line is this whole thing doesn't fit where we are. The infrastructure's not there. We flood, you already know that. But the housing, who wants all these townhouses down there? We can't handle the traffic as it is. Takes three to six months to get into a doctor to see anybody. You can't get into Publix anymore. I've been here thirty-plus years and raised my kids. I know many people have been here longer. We don't want to see this ruined. I used to live in Los Angeles. I lived in Dade County. That's what we're becoming. Everybody's coming up from Dade and Broward, and we're accommodating them with townhouses and all these homes stacked up in an area that should be preserved for the beauty that it is. It's White City. It's gorgeous. It's overrun with trees. Wildlife has nowhere to go. They talked earlier about the bobcats and the snakes and the animals that are living that are getting displaced, and as every one of these things comes in, they have nowhere to go. So they end up in your backyard, and it's not safe. It's not the life that we are all accustomed to living. Nobody is happy about this. I expect development's going to come, but could we put it in where it fits the community? And I was hoping that that is your job, and I've heard from tonight it is. You seem to do a really good job of listening, and I appreciate that. We don't want to see these townhouses stacked, and a buffer of trees is only going to hide them for a minute because their cars are pulling out of there, four cars per unit at a hundred and ninety units, houses and townhouses. I don't know where all these people are supposed to go. So I just hope that you'll give this a long pause and not rubber sample away our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Collins. My mother, Jeanne McCorkle, lives in one of the houses that surrounds the, the project. I'm here, one, I...
We just need an address for the record.
Nine, nine, six Echo Street, Fort Pierce, Florida.
Thank you.
I appreciate the townhouses exiting on US One, keeps them off Oleander, and I appreciate the consideration and the hundred-foot boundary by mom's house. And I also appreciate the bioswells. Again, we've talked about the drainage, and I'm going to just top that off with another subject later, but the hundred-foot oak, the hundred-year-old oak trees, I really want to try and preserve as many of those as we can. I would like to reduce the density. In order to do that, I think the density would improve the drainage as well. Habitat, when I looked at the environmental impact report back from 2024, they talked about zero tortoises were found and zero burrows. They have three or four gopher turtles coming on my mom and Tricia's property often, daily almost even. Okay, there's a lot of animals that still live out there. The picture that you saw of, of Seager Road and Oleander at that corner, which was in 2021, is where I live, and I had two inches of water in our house. The water on Oleander does somewhat flood, flow our way. There's a lot of swales, natural swales that are out there that, yes, homeowners own, county owns, South Florida owns, but they're, somebody has to be responsible for it and not just for a short period. We have to make sure that when houses are being built, they are covering up these natural swales, which hurts us. You know, the, the fifty-foot lot really is the kicker for me. Lone Pine is a beautiful community. We need lower density. I know that we're building, and you know that I really want lower density.
Please, guys, speak into the mic because it's recorded.
I really want lower density. We all do. I think it wouldn't be such of a problem. The drainage, yes, is the problem. Hardpan, White City is known for its hardpan. I know Mr. Lawrence has talked about it before, but we live between the savannas and the St. Lucie County River. We have hardpan. It doesn't drain very well out there. And this hundred-year flood that happens doesn't happen every hundred years. It happens every other year. I mean, I constantly have water. My house looks like it's floating in the river, okay, because of the amount of drainage issues that we do have. And I'm done. Okay?
All right.
Again, thank you very much.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Cornet, one, four, zero, one Lone Pine Drive. I'm here to represent the Lone Pine Homeowners Association. We have twenty-three lots. I have twenty-three neighbors. Generally speaking, we're not in support of bringing Port St. Lucie to Fort Pierce. There's huge drainage concerns. We have the ditch that runs down the south side of our property. It's actually in my backyard. We own halfway to the center of the ditch. We've been told by many people at the county that the county only has an access easement, so we're responsible for maintaining it. We are not interested in somebody else coming into our backyards to maintain the ditch. So we have huge concerns about drainage. All of the water that's not going to be able to flow through the ground, it's going to be running our direction to the river. All of our properties, the drainage flows to the front, so it goes through the road. We're fine with that. Even our own retention pond now with twenty-three lots overflows when it rains on a good day. So adding all of that concrete, all of those foundations, all of the homes, it's just going to further the issue with flooding and drainage all through White City back to the river. So that's all I have to say.
Awesome. Thank you.
I tied that to Tuesday night, so I'm also done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Steve Waters. I live at sixty-four, oh, five Oleander Avenue. And I think I'm going to piggyback on, off of Mr. Benton's, what he was talking about mostly is our concerns with infrastructure, safety of our residents, the lack of sidewalks, bike paths. The roads are just, Oleander Drive is not, just cannot accommodate any more traffic. Everyone has a right to build and develop their property to the codes where, that you guys allow and zoning allows. We can't stop growth, but we have to have the infrastructure to support it. And right now, as all of you have spoken, Kidderman, Seager, Oleander, infrastructure is not there to support the density and the growth. Until that's done, we need to hold off on any, you know, we have a right to, everyone has a right to develop their land, but we have to have the infrastructure to support it. And right now, it doesn't support it. With the traffic moving from US One to Oleander, and we're seeing that every day. I see it every day when I leave to go to work. It's the same as what happened on Indian River Drive. All that traffic went to Indian River Drive. You had to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five. You know, it's just, it's, the traffic is an issue, and more density is just going to create more problems for us. So that's all I really have to say, but the concerns are what everyone has said. The roads are not, will not accommodate what we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Courtney Santarella, ten, fifty Tilton Road, and I want to thank you for your service on the board. I'm here to ask you to unanimously vote no to this project and these developers. Oleander Avenue is such a special place. It's, it should be treasured. It should be treasured and not destroyed by these developers. You just granted them... You just granted them approval for over 8,000 homes not far from here, Pod 1, Pod 2, Solaris. These developers are like on steroids. You just need to pump the brakes then, that's why I'm here to talk about the beauty of Oleander, and I hope that you keep it and save it and treasure it instead of destroy it. Thank you.
Hi, Steve Holden, 6404 Oleander Avenue. I live in the, with the property that touches the southwest corner of Tidewater 1. I'm not going to talk about traffic or water, or schools or sidewalks, I'm going to talk about White City. We have a special place in White City. It is a little taste of old Florida, one mile off of US-1. It's a special place. I've been told by developers, I believe it was one of the developers here, because it was almost word for word repeated tonight, that the properties are going to be developed. I believe one of the board members said that tonight on one of the previous development projects. The properties are going to get developed, because the textbooks tell them. It's supposed to be commercial, then high-density residential, lower-density residential, and then moving out to rural as you go east to west. It only has to be that way because the developers wrote the textbooks. We don't need to do that. We can preserve White City in the way that it is, and that's what we want to do. A quick note about, someone mentioned it's affordable housing? Let's just take that off the table. It's not affordable housing. What we're going to have are three families living in one unit. My son tried to get into Tidewater 1. He's an ESIC sergeant in the US Army, he couldn't afford it. His family needed to come here while he went for a deployment. Couldn't afford the $10,000 upfront needed to move into Tidewater 1. So let's stop with the affordability of the Tidewater projects. They're not affordable for the people. You can come up with all kinds of housing authority, statistics and whatnot, but $2,800 a month and $10,000 to move in is not an affordable place for a normal, if a, if an ESIC sergeant in the US Army can't afford to move his family in there, then it's too not affordable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll bring up the rear. Patricia Parker, 6100 Oleander Avenue. I am the other house that's in that nice little horseshoe that's remaining, or the horseshoe is being built around. My house was built in 1901, and we are in elevated property, so we fortunately have not had the flooding inside of our house that we've had, as others may have had on our road. I'm very concerned, one of my primary concerns is the amount of wildlife that's going to be displaced by this development. I'm already starting, I never had heard coyotes so loud as I do in my own backyard right now, they're just, they're in their lot that they're getting ready to tear all the trees out of. Where are those animals going to go? They're going to come and eat my dog or my cats? I don't know what's going to happen. I already have to have one of my neighbors come over when I leave town to put a raccoon door up for me, so the raccoons don't come into my house to eat cat food. I can only perceive that that's going to get worse. One of our other neighbors that lives over in Ulrich that's having some problems over in that area was at one of our meetings, and she mentioned when they started tearing up that area and building houses on her road, Melville, the extension of Melville, that she had to pay thousands of dollars to have her cars exterminated, rats. They got in her car, in her engine, in her seats, everywhere. I can't even imagine. That's just a couple of houses on Melville. This is 184. I have to second that the affordable housing statement is a little absurd, and I believe the people that I talked to said the average sale price was going to be around $450,000. Now, I know I got a really good deal on my house, and we are getting ready to either renovate or sell, those are our options. If we sell, we're going to look at buying a $400,000 house that's going to have over $6,000 in property taxes. We can't afford that. So we get to stay in our little enclave with 184 houses now built around us. We do appreciate the concessions that they have agreed to us, and I even got another one that they had discussed possibly extending sewer to our properties, because we're on septic tanks, and that again would help the community, that's great, but agreed with Kim, the density needs to come down. We are just under an acre, myself and my next-door neighbor, so we have the two remaining holdout acres there on Oleander, and it just, I can't even imagine, once the building starts, the dirt, the noise, the animals, it's a little frightful, you know? So like I said, depending on whether to stay or whether to go, and then where do you go? Further north and move this problem with us? That doesn't seem quite fair either.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board? Seeing none, we will close public comment and come back to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Just go fast.
You got to come up to the mic, everything's recorded.
I'm sorry, I had asked you a question, then forgot to bring it up. It's just one other quick thing, Trish Parker, 6100 Oleander. My neighbor Jeanne had done just a quick traffic study herself, sitting in her driveway one afternoon, and we discussed it, and between 5:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon, there were 332 cars that went by her driveway, and then again, between 4:30 and 5:00 on another day, going back, 146 cars. So their study seems to be a lot less density, as far as the cars they're counting. I personally have never seen the little rubber strips that go out and count the cars as they go by. We're out there every day, I haven't seen them, so I'm not sure how they did their study, but our numbers don't match up with theirs.
Thank you. I wouldn't want.
Close it.
Close public comment again, and then back to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dow.
Based on our discussion tonight, it looks like this project lacks continuity with the neighborhood. It doesn't have adequate storm water mitigation, obviously an unsafe traffic pattern. And part of, yeah, part of our obligation here as this board is to preserve the quality of life for our residents here in St. Lucie County. We also need to listen to your concerns, and based on these elements and the discussion tonight, I make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion to deny by Mr. Odell, a second by Mr. Neese. Can we call the board?
Commissioner Neese.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes, ma'am, to deny.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes, ma'am, to deny.
Commissioner Odell.
Yes, ma'am, to deny.
Commissioner Gutler.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Slay.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Benner.
So, we didn't get to discuss it, so.
Yeah. So I'm going to say no? That ties it, unless, no?
No, it's unanimous. If you say no.
It's 4-3. Seven.
It'll be 4-3. There, it's, you have an odd number before you had one at stake.
Okay, you're voting now. All right, so no.
So can I, can I say something real quick, because we didn't get to, right? So I look at this as twofold, and what makes this complicated is that there's both sides to this in one plan, and I say that with the townhomes and then the house side. Because if you look at the house side, it's zoned RS2. So Lone Pine Drive is technically RS2. Well, when you go down and look at Coral Street and Echo Street, those are three or four that they were able to bait. So technically, they're coming in on the house side pretty much in the same range as Coral Street and Echo Street. I think what jams it up makes it complicated. I wish this was two separate plans coming in here at one time, and then we could like, kind of pick them apart, but because they're both together like that, it just, it seems like a lot. But when you look around surrounding neighborhood, if you guys were to take that one section where you were going to build houses on, I don't think it's too far off of what is existing already in there. I voted for Tidewater 1 when that went through, and a lot of my, my heart behind that was because it's pouring out on the US-1, right? So there was, I would have never passed it with it going out on Oleander, but the way that you guys put it in together, that may be doable. So I don't know what this looks like going forward for you, but I think that it would have been better off being separated as than trying to be two different things at once, if that makes sense, kind of come loose things together. But I don't think you're far off on the housing on the other side, so I just, that's my two sides.
I concur. Any other discussions? So motion to deny passes? Again, we are, we are just a recommending body. This will still go to the Board of County Commissioners, and they will have a vote on it. Thanks for coming out and being involved. Make sure you guys keep an eye out for when that comes in front of the board for their meeting. Make sure you show up and participate and let your voices be heard. Other than that, do we have any workshops?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dow.
We had a recent workshop that was canceled, because staff knew that that's been rescheduled.
You want to wait a minute? Do it, noises. Yeah.
We have a workshop that was canceled. Do you know if it's been rescheduled?
Chair Benner, members of the commission, as you noted previously last week, we had scheduled a joint workshop between the Board of County Commissioners and Planning and Zoning Commission. That was canceled due to the conflict.
Excuse me. We're still, we're still in the meeting technically? We have all the conversations outside, so we can prep up, please.
The conflict's in another policy direction. At this time, there's not been a rescheduled workshop, and we're awaiting any indication from the board if that's to be rescheduled, but at this time, there's no guidance to facilitate that right now.
All right, please let us know.
What's the likeliness they're going to reschedule?
I can't tell you the answer to that question. We're currently in our budget prep for the next fiscal year. We're also working on updating our transportation impact fees, our comprehensive plan evaluation and appraisal reviews. There's a lot of balls in the air at the moment, so giving you a percentage on if it'll get rescheduled, I can't tell you.
What if there's moon splatters? Peter.
Every commercial spot on that four-way should have a moon splatter.
Do we add the price of per inch for a tree also? I mean, is that something we can like, next time, recommend? Talk about mitigating?
So our land development code has a price per inch.
Can we raise that with inflation? When was that put in?
I can't tell you.
1954.
Take it to the poorhouse, raise it. So have you ever had to pay for a tree to get taken out? I mean, no, but. You have to get a loan to take it out. Yeah, well, I mean, they're writing checks of $400,000 to pull them out, man. You and I are different than. I think it exceeded inflation a long time ago. Yeah, I mean, but that's all they're doing, they're just, they're just writing checks, flying in there. Tidewater never left a tree.
Yeah. So the workshop that got canceled, yes, putting that at a different date, is that?
We are not scheduling it for a different date at the moment, but I did wanted to, want to mention to this board that we are currently updating our transportation impact fee study. If this board remembers, the board adopted the current transportation impact fee in 2022. We're undergoing the study right now. We are holding a public workshop on July 17th. That workshop will be at 1:00 PM, and then following on the 17th, we're going to be presenting the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that'll be our first public hearing in order to update our transportation impact fee. So you don't have to come to the public workshop unless you want to, because you're going to be getting a similar presentation at your regularly scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Belcher, is that the only one you're looking at to raise?
Currently, that's the only one that we're looking at at the moment. We're actually going to be looking at that. We're doing it a year early due to circumstances, price of materials in order to, in order to construct roads, so we're actually constructing, or doing that a year early. You'll be seeing the other impact fees next year.
Okay. I thought this one was a little early.
Yep.
And then quick question. So when, a lot of these applicants comment about drainage, they all seem to complain about the ditches, but aren't the ditches, like, where's the, the line of like, private communities maintaining ditches, the county maintaining ditches? Like, it seems like everybody comes in and complains about drainage, and it's, nobody wants to take ownership as who's in charge. Like, if it's an HOA, and HOA has bad drainage on their properties, and they can come in and complain about their drainage problems? Like, where do they, where's their delineation, or who defines ownership of maintaining those? So we maybe can address that, or like, point them in the right direction? Instead of it just being like, everybody comes in here and points fingers, and then we're trying to vote on a project that has nothing, that's four or five parcel, large parcels over, and it's like.
Well, the reality is, in that project, the water flow would have been a lot better if that project was built than what is there now, right? But unfortunately, it gets lost in all of the, this isn't maintained, my stuff floods over here, and it gets thrown on them, and it's, you know.
So Chair Benner, and I think that's the reality of development, a lot of times, it does improve drainage because of the standards for South Florida water management in our county drainage. So Cory, you might want to weigh in on whose responsibility it is to maintain ditches. I think it's kind of a hodgepodge, and in White City, you have historic drainage features that go back decades and decades.
That's certainly the case. You have a lot of different entities, whether it's the county maintaining drainage for our roadways, corridors, DOT with US-1 and portions of Midway. We have the water control districts related to St. Lucie River, and as, as we noted, 100 years ago, the standards were, you know, figure out how to prevent your property from being drained, impacted by storm water, raise it, dig a pond, you name it, but today's standards are much, much more stringent, and they're required to evaluate historic drainage flows, what's happening, and how their development would impact the surrounding area. But as we've noted, the county has invested in a sizable pond on Melville, a notable pond on Citrus. There's also a valuation of an improvement project down at Sager and Oleander that would actually piggyback on that pond, which is on the south side of Sager, that the county made a significant investment in. So the county is acquiring land along the river for preservation of native habitat and resources, as well as investing in storm water improvements, and arguably, it's rectifying decade-old, even century-old issues.
Just takes time.
For like residents, like, they're just basically like, it's wild, like, there's really no ownership from anybody, like, the county's not going to come out to that one on Lone Pine that sounds like is half and half. The county's not going to come out and maintain that ditch, it sounds like, but, and the HOA also isn't maintaining the ditch either, but then everybody complains about it flooding.
So Lone Pine, being a newer community, it is a PUD, they have a recorded plat, usually the plat, newer plats dedicate who's, A, going to own the property, B, who's responsible for maintaining it. As they noted, they drain toward the road, they have a standalone pond on the east side of their development that handles most of their drainage. I think it just so happens that that historic canal exists in the south, but it sounds like they don't have any benefit, immediate benefit. If their immediate system's working, they might not have any interest in maintenance.
It's not, it's not working, because even their pond never flows, if their ponds are supported, their outfalls aren't working.
And their ponds on the east side, and everything flows to the west.
Nobody out there to make sure they maintain what they need to maintain.
So follow-up, yeah. And those five or six homes on that south side of Lone Star, they're all low-lying, if you ever walk over there, they're, you know, they're older. So those guys don't want them to do anything with that ditch, because they don't want to be flooded out, because they actually are higher than that ditch. So if they come in and dig it out and clean it up, raise it up to move, it actually holds water, then they're going to retain everything, and then the road's underwater. I'm telling you, it's a big circle, like.
Yeah, it just doesn't make, it's like it defies, it doesn't make any logical sense, so.
Yeah, what she even said too, they don't make it, like, probably, of course, probably their responsibility, they don't understand, they're not going to do it until they're flooded in the middle.
Yeah, the problem is, they built recently, so they're built higher than, and they're not going to have any, like you said, almost no benefit to doing it.
Mr. Chair. Motion to adjourn.
Second, so move. All right, so move, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
See you next week.